This morning, we will take up our first item, Board of Supervisors Matters. And we shall start with Supervisor Townsend.
I'll turn the mic on then. Good morning. And since it's been awhile since we met, there's a few things. I want to go back to the 19th of last month. The Chair and I met with the Forest Service and Great Basin Institute. Just looking for more projects that we can do together, more partnerships that we can do. And it was a great meeting, and I think that we're going to have some things hopefully lined up for 2020 that we can do to help with the forest management. Also, speaking of that one, on the 20th, went up to Hot Springs with Brian Thoburn from Southern California Edison because of some vegetation management issues they were having up there. So we had a meeting with Edison, myself, and many of the community members, just talking about what the policies are about the tree trimming and about tree falling around the electric lines. And so that was, started off as a pretty interesting meeting, and ended up pretty good. And so I think we're making some progress up in that area. And on the 26th, I had the opportunity to tour with CAL FIRE with Stan Machado, David Chai, and Grayson Bedart. And we went up, started with Mountain Home and Balch Park with the prescribed burning that's going on up there. Really doing a fantastic job up there at keeping that, keeping all the underbrush low, keeping things where if a fire did start, it wouldn't get up into the crown of the trees. And then we, we went on over to Posey and looked at up in the Panorama Heights area. We looked at where some clearing could be done there. They have some grants that are in, and we're going to investigate how we might be able to help with that project in that area, which is, which CAL FIRE has the number at the top of their list. And our crews are also up there, have also been up there working, making some progress. And all of us, from the 2nd to the 6th, were in San Francisco for the California State Association of Counties Conference. And for me, it was the second annual conference. The first one was taken up with New Supervisors Institute. It was in San Diego. And so this was interesting to catch up with the other new supervisors and see how things are going, compare notes. And one of the things was every time that I got into a conversation with the other new supervisors, I was very proud of the relationship that we have between this board, the five members of this board, and the things that we're able to get done and how we're able to move forward, where a lot of the counties said they did not have that relationship. So I was, I was just happy and proud to be a member of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors representing there. Other important thing is being on a couple of the policy committees with CSAC. I think those were very interesting. Ag Environment Natural Resources Policy Committee had some great discussions, reviewed the things that they've been, that we've been lobbying for over the past year, and then set the legislative and lobbying agenda for next year. And also with the Housing and Transportation Policy Committee. And of course, the Highway 99 was right in the middle of that discussion with three supervisors from the Central California Counties, myself included, being on that committee. And so thankfully, after we were pretty exercised in that conversation, thankfully, that funding that was pulled from the, with the Governor's Executive Order has been, has been reinstated. So we're thankful for that. And also, we had a lot of networking, a lot of workshops, jails, forest management. So it was a very interesting time. And then on the 9th, we had Tulare County Association of Governments with our year-end reports from all of the cities and from the county. And on the 11th, Local Area Formation Commission with, met right here with Supervisor Vanderpool and myself, and we had a report from the Calafco Convention and sort of looked at what's coming up for this next year. Had the opportunity to go on the 13th, Congressman Nunes was here in Visalia along with author Lee Smith and Ray Appleton from 580 KMJ, talking about Lee Smith's new book. And so I had a nice time, a nice visit with, with the Congressman at that event. And then yesterday, the East Tulie Groundwater Sustainability Agency had a public hearing to receive our comments on the draft groundwater sustainability plan. We received probably about 20 written comments, zero verbal comments. Interestingly, we were all ready to spend a long afternoon there. But most everything's been submitted in writing, and so now we'll be updating that draft, getting ready to submit in January. And then coming up on the 18th, tomorrow, the Mighty 190 Meeting, we're going to be having at the Forest Service Office there just below Springville, and doing some planning. The 19th, Ag Business Luncheon in Porterville. On the 20th, the CSAC Institute, be welcoming that, those classes in Tulare County. And then after that, right after that, the Fire Academy graduation will be right here, which I have a friend that's graduating, so we'll be here in attendance to congratulate them. And beyond that, Merry Christmas.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things that I want to go over.
Oh, Mel, are you messing with me? All right.
Yes.
Better? Okay. Maybe I'll just stay further back from the microphone. All right. A few things that I want to go over. Thank you Supervisor Townsend for reviewing the CSAC Conference and a few of the events and meetings that have taken place these last few weeks. I won't look back, I'll just look, look forward for the most part. It's been a very busy few weeks, and of course, during the holiday season, it seems to be that way. Lots of events and festivities. This morning, we had an SJVIA conference call, a couple of items that were time-sensitive that had to be addressed without the board members being able to convene before the end of the year in person. So we took care of those items over the conference call and set up well for next year, I believe. Yesterday, the Greater Cuias Groundwater Sustainability Agency had its public hearing. We too received numerous written comments as well as verbal comments. And those, those comments and feedback will be taken into consideration as the plan is amended, finalized, and submitted to the Department of Water Resources. This evening, the City of Tulare will be taking up the, and considering the Emergency Shelter Crisis Declaration. And then we'll also be receiving a report on the countywide homeless, homelessness effort that's been underway, which we will be hearing at today's meeting. The City Council's meeting starts at 6 o'clock this evening, and I know that's been an issue that the City of Tulare has been very involved with. And I'm anxious to see how that will continue to move forward and address the homeless situation inside of city limits in the City of Tulare, as well as collaborating with the county in our efforts and our providing of services. We've, we have met, I know Jason and I have met with city staff and city council member regarding the homelessness issue. And I know that there's no one silver bullet, so a multifaceted approach, as we will hear later on today, is what's going to be needed to move this problem, this crisis, in the positive direction. This Thursday, I will, I have the pleasure of judging the Government Plaza Holiday Door Decorating Contest. I get the, get to do that with Supervisor Shucklian. It's nice to feel the holiday spirit throughout the county. And in, in our offices, we even have some doors that are decorated. And I was criticized by one of my colleagues for not having my door decorated, but I took care of that this morning. And I, and I think that I'm going to be the superior Board of Supervisors door decorated. Supervisor Valero, that one's for you. But I hope everybody has a safe and wonderful holiday season. Enjoy the Christmas parties and all the holiday festivities, and always remember what it's all about. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Shucklian.
All right. Vanderpool? Um, oh, hold on.
Hey, your door's not decorated either, Amy.
No, it's not. I'm getting to that afterwards. All right, as everybody else has said, it's, there's been a lot going on over the last few weeks. On the 21st of November, Mayor Bob Link and I spoke at the Visalia Community Action Group. It's a group of concerned citizens that have gotten together and, and formed a group to discuss the homeless issue within Visalia. So he and I spoke to them. The 22nd, I traveled to Merced for my San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting. That is the Amtrak, for those of you. The 23rd, I was a suspect in a murder mystery for the Rotary Foundation, along with Sheriff Boudreau and DA Tim Ward. And nobody knew, we didn't know at the beginning who the murderer was, and come to find out, it was me. Go figure. And the other thing that came to fruition was that I had a secret crush on DA Ward, his character. So that was a nice night, and it raised a lot of money for the Rotary Foundation. On the 2nd, I participated in the traditional Visalia Candy Cane Lane Parade with Parade One, and Chief Norman and Ronnie Castillo was our chauffeur once again. I then went on to the CSAC Conference. A lot of good sessions, but I think for me, the one that was the most meaningful was a mobile workshop. We took a bus through San Francisco, along with our Director of HHSA, Tim Lutz. And we went to the Mission Access Point, which is in the Mission District of San Francisco that folks can go into and get help if they have an issue with being homeless. There are 70 different nonprofits that are involved with the, San Francisco has its own Department of Homelessness and Supportive Housing. They have a $300 million a year budget, but they also have a big homeless problem. We then went to the Bay Shore Navigation Center, which is a 120-bed facility that provides navigation for folks. If they need to be on SSI or get any kind of government help to help them move on to more permanent housing, that's available for them there. It was quite, quite a navigation center, and I know Porterville is working on something similar here in Tulare County. Of course, not 120 beds, but anything is, is going to be a big help. So that was, that was a very interesting workshop. I think they also said for every 50 people that they house, 150 new people become homeless. Was that the quote there, Tim? Yeah. So we, we do have a problem here, and on a scale, it might be just as, as big as what they see there. Last Wednesday, I attended my Workforce Investment Board meeting, and I just want to share a few things. They put out a newsletter every month, and the Workforce Data Newsletter for October 2019 compared to October 2018. The unemployment rate for Tulare County had decreased by .4%. Our farm jobs had increased by 100%. Our largest gain was educational and health services with 900 jobs. I'm sorry, they did, they did not increase by 100%, 100 jobs. It's early still. Our labor force increased by 900. Our non-farm jobs increased by 3,500. And our largest decline was professional and business services with a decline of 200 jobs. So I thought that was interesting. We're on, you know, at least a little decrease from the year before. Tomorrow, I will have my, chair my homeless task force. Friday, I will also be attending the Fire Academy graduation. And on Monday, the trout return to Mooney's Grove. The Department of Fish and Game will be stocking the pond with 500 pounds of rainbow trout. So if you have kids and they're bored during the Christmas vacation, come on out to Mooney's Grove between 9:00 and 11:00. And it's quite an event when they come and they open up that truck and those fish start flopping into the water. I just grab them. I don't even need a pole. So that's all I have. And again, Merry Christmas to all, Happy Hanukkah on the 23rd, and that's all I have.
Good. Supervisor Valero.
Good morning Tulare County. Before I share what I've been doing since our last meeting, I want to update staff on kind of an issue that happened recently. So as some of you know, I ended up in the hospital after our last meeting on November 19th. And I spent a few days there as a result of 500-plus sugar levels. The new job came with a less than healthy eating routine, along with constant Starbucks runs, even though I don't really want to shout them out now, but to fuel my long and arduous days. That morning, I had a venti light iced strawberry acai e, very berry hibiscus, with three pumps of sugar, a sugar plum Danish. And then a few hours later, I had a footlong deli delicious. And then on my way home, even though I wasn't hungry, I stopped to get a pad thai fried tofu and a Thai iced tea. So as you can tell, I had a lot of sugar that, that afternoon. And after reflecting back on my experience, I realized that some of the work I was advocating for and participating in was actually for me. I had been speaking at these diabetes welcome events. I had been going on a diabetes walk. I had also allowed a colleague of mine to have a banner on one of the parades for diabetes awareness. Come to find out, yes, it was for me. And so thankfully, I've been monitoring what I eat and exercising to stay healthy. And so I want to encourage you to pay attention to your own health, to give yourself some self-care, and pace yourself on your journey. I realize that I cannot be good to or for anyone if I'm not good to myself. And so I also want to give a shout-out to Chief Norman for being by my side at the hospital, so much appreciated. That being said, these are some of the highlights since we last met. I had the privilege to attend the Tulare County Fire Department's Second Annual Family Christmas Potluck at Station 25 in Tulare. Our TC Fire Chief dressed up as Santa and shared cheer and gifts to all the children in attendance. So thank you, TCFD, for always serving it up with excellence, pride, and commitment to our region and beyond. I attended the Alta Historical Society's Christmas at the White House Event, where we recognize and thank the tremendous work of the society in preserving and showcasing local history and culture in the North County. I too attended the California State Association of Counties, and I just want to highlight just a few things from that. There's a quote from one of our luncheon speakers that said this, and it's from Wes Moore. "You, as a county supervisor, do not get to cherry pick who you fight for." Once again, you, as a county supervisor, do not get to cherry pick who you fight for. And this is evident in the work we all do on this dais to move our county forward. I learned a great deal at this conference, particularly with the session dedicated to the foster care system, highlighting a successful program in Los Angeles County, and where we watched a short documentary on a video called Foster. Sadly, many times, we can also correlate the foster care system with youth challenges in trials post-placement that then lead to connections with the juvenile justice system. And I also got to attend a session on the juvenile justice system. What resonated with me was this. When we lock up our youth, does it send a message that we are giving up on them? I learned about our ever-changing juvenile justice system and the ways we can incorporate new strategies and innovation to change the game in this area. It also led me to think about our new Career and Technical Education CTE campus next to our juvenile detention facility. I believe this vision, with the help of our probation chief and her strategic vision, will help reduce our recidivism rate across the county and connect our youth to job readiness opportunities. I was also able to decorate a tree and donate it to Open Gate Ministries, where later that afternoon, I attended the Seventh Annual Christmas Tree Auction and Boutique. It was great to see organizations and individuals coming together to support a great cause, Open Gate Ministries, a place for women and families that have been affected by domestic violence. I also participated in the London Christmas Parade last Saturday. Always a joy to participate in all things London, as that community has so much heart, compassion, and community to exceed beyond measure. And I also want to thank our sheriff for really helping out with the Kings River Elementary and providing over 400 toys to the youth there. Many of those youth also living below the poverty line. So thank you for your concerted effort and really making London a great place to have that event. I attended the biannual Cutlerosi Mothers Daughter Conference on Saturday, and got to hear from Liz Gonzalez, KMPH Fox 26 anchor, who shared about her story and the journey through hardship. And then lastly, I spent an hour of my Saturday morning picking oranges with Harvesting Hope. Harvesting Hope engages youth in fieldwork and provides all gleaned fruits to local food banks, like the Visalia Emergency Aid Council and Food Link for Tulare County. It is always an honor to speak to these youth and thank them for the Saturday sacrifice they make to provide for others. And that is all I have.
I want to do something a little bit different, being that this is the last meeting of the year. I just wanted to highlight a few things that this board has accomplished over the, this past year. And I'll go over briefly, since we've endured quite a bit already this morning. And I recognize there's many other things that, that haven't been touched on. But these are just, again, some highlights that I, that I picked off over the last day or so, that I, that I'm really proud to serve on this board on behalf of the citizens of Tulare County, and on behalf of all the staff that's doing this work on a regular basis. We had a great Visalia Wellness Center opening this year, and that was something that was a long time coming. And I think as we talk about mental health in our communities, and we look at providing that additional resource to getting people in a great direction. We completed an economic development plan that can help us find additional jobs. As Supervisor Shucklian talked about, how the jobs are continuing to grow, we shouldn't be satisfied with that, and looking for other opportunities to encourage businesses and to help this county get out of the poverty that we see all around. We opened up our, our solar facilities throughout our county. A $28 million project, that was a large project. I know it impacted many of the departments, but it's hopefully that you guys are beginning to start seeing some reductions in your utility bills, or will be at least in ISFs to come. And that, that's going to be a great thing. We, we had a groundbreaking for Fire Station One, phenomenal new facility, and looking forward to having a ribbon cutting shortly. We also had a groundbreaking for Three Rivers Public Restroom, and that's, that's probably something more that's close to home for me, that was important, but that was something that's a big deal for that community. We looked at our animal services ordinance and, and had a major update on that early in the year. And that was something that wasn't without controversy. It was something that people are very passionate about when it comes to animals, but I think is something that helps us reduce puppy mills, helps us to reduce the pet overpopulation, and make sure that, you know, some of our, our own family members are taken well care of. We've taken huge strides on having additional engagement on forest health, and that's always been a priority for this board, but it really has taken it to a whole nother level as far as how engaged we are, looking at doing additional work in our national forests, and being able to make sure that we're protecting our communities, our watershed, our air shed, and, and still having wonderful places to recreate in our mountains. We added additional code enforcement to try and clean up our communities and make sure that we have pride in our communities. The engagement that staff has had on the groundwater sustainability plans as they're getting developed. Supervisor Vanderpool spoke about the Greater Cuias Hearing yesterday. There's multiple additional groundwater sustainability agencies that this board serves on, and staff are engaged with. And staff's been engaged on all of those plans and making sure the county's input is there. We approved a strategic plan for our Tulare County Museum. And again, I'm not a big fan of papered plans and documents, but I think that really sets that museum forward in a trajectory that can make it a, a regional prize throughout the San Joaquin Valley. Our used pesticide container disposal that our Ag Department led this year, again, not something that's going to get a lot of headlines, but it's something that, for farmers that have had used containers laying around the farm, it's, it's a great, it's a great ability to get them off, to dispose of them in a safe way, and to be able to be not just an enforcement agency, but also to be a helping agency from that standpoint. Probation has, has done a great job leading an effort to do best practices and analyze and see where we can continue to strive to, to find better and better ways to do business. And that continuous improvement is something that's, that's very important. And then lastly, as part of CSAC, I think that we're making some great progress on the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties. Personally, that was, I thought, the most beneficial part of, for me, the CSAC Conference, where we had most of our San Joaquin Valley County Board of Supervisors in a room. We were able to have a very productive one hour discussing some policy issues that we wanted to advocate for with the Governor on behalf of the San Joaquin Valley. We were able to do that, have a nice dialogue, as well as do some organizational cleanup to try and figure out. And I know, again, I know there was a lot of other issues that we've worked on and things that, that have gone on over, over 2019, but those are just some of the highlights, and I really appreciate all the work that staff's placed into it to, you know, help better serve Tulare County. With that, we'll move on to Item 2, Presentation Given by Randy Dodd, President of Adventist Health Tulare Regarding Their Year-In Review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, and Staff. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you a quick update on how we're doing at the hospital in Tulare. We have now been open just over a year in October, so a year and a couple of months now. And a lot's happened over that time that I wanted to make sure that you all were kind of aware of. You may recall, a year ago, when we did get ready to open, we had quite a bit of fear, skepticism, some cynicism perhaps in the community. And I think we've changed a lot of that over the course of the last year, as we've been able to lift up new services in our facilities. We've also uncovered quite a few more challenges probably than we anticipated initially. And you may recall that we opened the hospital in just over 110 days, which didn't give us a lot of time to do complete due diligence to make sure we understood exactly where everything was, because we just didn't have the time. So we have gone to work on that, but it's an old building, it needs a lot of love. We've invested this year about $5 million in services and equipment to lift up different programs. And during this year, we celebrated the first baby to be born in Tulare again after almost two years of not having that service available in that community. We've upgraded a great deal of our surgical equipment and our imaging equipment, and that really has a lot to do for our physicians that want to practice medicine there, to make sure that we have the best possible equipment available to them. We opened up nuclear medicine capabilities there. We broke ground recently on a new medical clinic in Tulare, just north of the, the outlets there on Hillman. It's about an 18,000-square-foot medical clinic and should house somewhere around 10 doctors and three dentists full-time in our community there. Also during the year, we combined with Life Hope Centers to do two events in Tulare County, one in Tulare and the other one in Visalia, where we provided free dental and vision care along with medical screenings for people that are underserved or underinsured. And in Tulare, we served about 350 people, and Visalia was about 150 people. So about 500 folks received free care for a variety of things that they otherwise didn't have insurance to cover. And we have plans to do that again this coming year in 2020. So we're already scheduled in May again for Tulare, and I think we're also looking for another date again in Visalia. Our Central Valley Network, which includes Tulare, Hanford, Selma, and Reedley, adopted over 300 families this year for Christmas, those families that were in need. It's been quite the show in all of our facilities, because the administrative suites at each of our hospitals is jam-packed with bags of toys and gifts. And this week, a lot of those deliveries are taking place to those families around the, the two counties, really between Kings and Tulare predominantly. Over the course of last year, we added about 400 jobs to Tulare County, and our payroll, wages, and benefits year-to-date through November is just over $16.5 million. That will continue to grow and has continued to grow throughout the course of the year as new services come online and additional programs are available to the community. We continue to bring new physicians and nurses to Tulare, the hospital there as well. And during the course of the last year, we've cared for 31,000 patients in our emergency department. So Supervisor Valero, you know how important it is to have an emergency room or So Supervisor Valero, you know how important it is to have an emergency room or a hospital close by when you have a need, and I think Tulare is benefiting from that as well. That's 31,000 people that didn't have to leave their community and go somewhere else for care. We've also performed hundreds of surgeries. And again, makes it a lot easier for family and loved ones to care for their family if they've got someone in the the hospital that's recovering from surgery to not have to travel to do so. One of the key challenges that we faced over the course of this past year has to do with payer contracts, insurer contracts. We still have three of them outstanding in Tulare that are going to be resolved here in January. But traditionally, the Tulare Hospital had really poor contracts. They're about half of what everyone else is getting paid for various services. And we we just couldn't accept those particular contracts at a base rate of what Tulare Regional had before, so we rejected them. And unfortunately, the insurance companies have played really hard with us to try and keep those rates low and not let them rise to market levels. But we think we're finally on a track to make that come together at the beginning of this year. We also have mammography services beginning in January. We have new signage for the hospital that's been on order and being manufactured that should be coming earlier this year. And before I take questions, wanted to wish you guys a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all that as well. Pete, I know you had the pleasure of hosting our Festival of Trees for the foundation there and did an outstanding job for that. I understand they raised somewhere south of $30,000 for that particular event as well. So that'll also help with buying equipment and other things that we need for our hospital as well. Any questions you might have?
Questions, Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment. Thank you, Randy, for coming and giving us this presentation. You know, a year ago when you came and said, hey, we're open for business and made a presentation to the board, it was a welcomed addition, but we really didn't know what to expect. And having you come back and and give us the results, 31,000 people in the emergency room that were able to receive care in their community, I think that's wonderful. And I think that it's also important to point out, too, that the patient base goes beyond the city of Tulare.
Absolutely.
It includes the unincorporated regions that we all represent and serve, southeast, west, north of the community of Tulare. And and all of the people in Tulare County benefit from a health network that's comprised of an active and open, serving the public Sierra View, Cuias Delta, and Tulare Regional. It's it's an integral part of the health network here in the county. So I welcome Adventist to Tulare County and and really do praise you and thank you for coming in and jumping in with both feet and beginning to offer free care through the clinics that you've talked about and mentioned, adopting families. You've really become a member of the community, and I think this county is very well-served by what you've been able to achieve and the services that you're offering, and you continue to improve. There's going to be some difficult decisions to come, I know, as you wrestle with the issue of finishing up a tower that you have to be occupying by a certain date. But I know that your investment in the community should pay off. So I I thank you. I'm very excited to have you as a part of the community. And I did share a a very personal story for me when I was the emcee of the Festival of Trees. And just so the public knows, I had a very, very close fatherly figure in my life, end up in the hospital. He actually thought he was going to die and he ended up in the ER. And he didn't want to go to Tulare based on experiences that the hospital's endured over the last couple of years. But Tulare was the only place he could get to in the state he was in. And he was there, I believe, for four days, three days or four days. And he told me at the end of that experience, he said, there is no better care he has ever received in a hospital in his life. And he's over 70 years old. So that says a lot about what you're doing in Tulare, and I encourage you to keep up the great work and I really look forward to having Adventist be a partner in the future.
Thank you very much.
You, too. Happy holidays.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thanks, Randy.
Any other questions? Other questions for Randy, members of the public?
I guess I'll share. So again, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for for No Easy Task and being able to be where you're at today. Just with response to what Supervisor Vanderpoel said, what are you doing in terms of combating some of that perception of community with regards to the hospital and making sure that community is aware that this is new, this is for the community, and and how are you reaching out to the community?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think, you know, our best strategy is the care we provide. So when people leave our hospital, they tell their friends and families the kind of care that they receive from us. Marketing goes so far, obviously, but skepticism's deep. And I think, you know, until people experience it themselves, it's kind of hard to realize that things are really different. I can tell you, I have an amazing staff there. I have amazing leadership there and fantastic physicians. So I I can see the palpable difference there and frankly, even within our own hospital system, because we have some very excited people there that feel like they're part of a very mission-oriented, purposeful existence in Tulare. They feel like they're being called there for a reason, and they 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 perform that way. I mean, they absolutely do. So I mean, I think the best word to get out there is word of mouth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate the time.
Our next item is a presentation of the 2019 Movember Participants and Announcement of the Challenge Winners.
Good morning, Chairman of the Board. My name is Lupi Garza, Human Resources Deputy Director. And this morning, we would like to acknowledge the Sixth Annual Movember Winners. As part of the county's wellness program, the month of November was designated as Men's Health Awareness Month. It's raising awareness to the risks that men face such as prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health, mental illnesses. County employees were encouraged to grow a beard or mustache during the month of November, submit a before-and-after selfie as part of the contest, and the board members would review and select the best mustache or beard grown in the month of November. Women were also encouraged to participate by encouraging their the men in their lives to compete and to also compete in the challenge. I am happy to report that this year we had 27 participants. We did have more, but they did submit their after, so we couldn't qualify them. But this is a great turnout. The first year in 2014, we had 10 people who participated, and now we've up to 25, 27, even 35, which was last year. I would, at this time, I would like to invite Chairman Crocker to come to the to the podium, to the front. And in lieu of time, I'm going to call up the all of the participants and at the very end announce the first and second prize winners. So if you can please, if you're here, please come up when I announce your names. So the first one is Andrew Pacheco from RMA, who's actually been a participant for the past few years since we, since inception of the program. Eric Soto, his before-and-after picture, HHSA. David McWen from WIB. Jeremy Petty from WIB. Grayson Conrad from probation. Jimmy Ibarra, RMA, he was also the first-place winner from last year. He's not able to make it today. Juan Artiaga from RMA. Mark Fleming from Tulare County Fire. Michael Gardner for RMA. Noah Whitaker from HHSA, Health and Human Services Agency. Richard Smith from IT, or TCICT. Cass Cook from Auditor Controller, Treasurer Tax Collector. Want to emphasize, though, the black eye and the broken teeth, the busted teeth. Fire Chief Charles Roman. This is the Tulare County Sheriff, a team of from Bob Wiley Detention Facility, Albert Cardenas. Albert Cardenas, I can't read that file. Oscar Gomez, David Berry, Jonathan Rodriguez, Joseph Rodriguez, Mario Mendoza, and Alfredo Flores. This is their after picture. And Fire, Tulare County Fire, also another team, Fire Academy 18, Blake Glazebrook, Antonio Mendoza, Justin Elizondo, Cody King, Joseph Rodriguez, Derek Vanderstol, and Scott Miranda. This is their after picture. And the winners are, second place, Noah Whitaker from the Health and Human Services Agency. First-place winner is? Mark Fleming from Fire. So then we would like to take a group picture and also thank, thanks, thank you to the benefits staff, Gail Rasmus, and then Jessica Gonzalez for assisting.
And Lupi, you might want to also share that I chose not to participate this year because I didn't want to take away from the thunder here.
We had to tone it down a little bit.
Open that with the kids tonight, Noah.
And then we'll have the board behind you guys. All right, get pulled together. Perfect, Supervisor. All right, ready, everybody? Look at me. One, two, three. Everyone do a thumbs up. Yay, Movember!
Mr. Chair, just real quick, I wanted to make a comment. Thank you to all the men who participated and the woman who didn't submit her entry, Supervisor Shucklin. It's really a fun, lighthearted effort in the county, a wellness effort, to help spread awareness about many men's health issues that go untested or unreported, you know, unnotified because of the stigma surrounding mental or surrounding mental health and various men's health issues and being macho, too macho to report. But I think this has definitely started a conversation. I did not submit my after photo because I know the judging is stacked against me. I have colleagues here, especially one who wants to win herself, so it becomes very difficult. But it really is about starting a conversation, and I'm proud to see that the number of participants has grown. And I do want to say, I think Cass Cook next year may be your year, so keep trying, buddy. That's all I've got.
Very good. Any other comments?
I just wanted to add, you know, we make a big deal every year about October and Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we have the the big pink bus that comes to give mammograms. So I think it's very important, as Supervisor Vanderpoel shared, that men's health is put out there in the public and and awareness is made. And that's it. Maybe we'll have a prostate bus next year.
All right. With that, I'm not going to ask for any more comments. Now go to Item Four, Public Comments. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on matters that are within this board's jurisdiction but not on today's agenda? Please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, or is there one? Seeing none. Fake out. We will go ahead and move to our Consent Calendar, Items Six through 72. Items Nine, 25, and 29 have been requested to be pulled for separate consideration. Are there any other items from the board wishing to?
Mr. Chair, I don't need to pull it. I was going to suggest we pull 25. Thank you for pulling that. On Items 31 and 38, I wanted to just make a quick comment. We don't need to pull them. On 31, this is the renewal of the Pixley Library Contract. I'm very happy that this has been renewed and we've come to an agreement with the landlord in Pixley. It's a great service to the community. I know it's very heavily utilized and it's a service that's much needed, and I know that the community is very excited about it. And I know the landowner, the foundation, is happy with the result as well. And then 58, wanted to comment, this, these are just adding some stop signs in Allen'sworth, but these are some intersections and areas that have really had some safety concerns in the past amongst residents and visitors to the community of Allen'sworth. Really happy to see this move forward. And even though they're just stop signs being added, it's going to truly enhance public safety in Allen'sworth, and I think it's worth noting that. So just wanted to point that out.
Good. Supervisor Townsend?
And I don't think we need to pull this one either, but I just had a question on Item 30. If we if we sell the existing equipment, we're replacing equipment, but I didn't know if we sell the existing, just from my own personal knowledge.
Good morning, John Hess. I am not sure if we're going to be surplusing. We'll take a look at that and get back. I know they're no longer in compliance, so we may have some difficulty selling them, you know, to some private owners on that, but we'll get that information and get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Of the consent calendar, less the items that you've suggested to be removed. We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, a second by, what we've got?
I hate it.
Supervisor Townsend, even though Supervisor Valero said it. Are there any public comments on any of the balance of the consent calendar? Seeing none, please cast your vote. And the vote is unanimous, 5-0. We'll take up Item Nine first. I pulled this item at a, I'd like to request also taking off November 10th in light of the Veterans Day holiday, that meeting.
Yeah, that must have been one that I I went over the calendar with Mel, and that must have been one that we missed. So I'm happy to suggest that be removed. We've tried to remove all the meetings surrounding holidays.
Very good. So is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Townsend.
Give it to, give it to Ed. That's fine.
The motion's actually by Supervisor Valero and second by Supervisor Townsend.
He's playing Dennis Townsend's game of pressing buttons.
It's the new technology.
Public comments on Item Nine, seeing none. Yeah, I know. Okay. Now cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, 5-0. Now we'll take up Item 25, our Appointment Cemetery District Appointment List. I did have two public comments requesting that this be pulled for separate consideration. We'll call up first Xavier Avila.
And both microphones work, so you can use either one.
This went fine?
Yep.
Hello, Xavier Avila, you need my address?
If you'd like, yeah, that'd be great.
13045 Avenue, 232 Tulare. So I'm coming today under I, what I consider a very unusual public comments for myself. I'm current trustee of the Tulare Public Cemetery and current chair, vice chair, president is here. He's excellent appointment here. He's been invaluable to the board. And I don't feel good about this, but I'm going to ask you to reconsider the appointment of Alberto Aguilar. I've seen him in the audience. I have no problem asking you to reconsider his appointment. I serve on the hospital board. Good to see Randy Dodd here of Tulare County, the Tulare District Healthcare District. And the reason I bring that up is because, you know, the hospital was closed for a little while, and I could tell you, there's a lot of things that didn't, if this single thing didn't happen, the hospital never would have opened. And one of those things that needs to be recognized is the employees that stayed behind that could have went to other hospitals. They chose to stay with a breakdown. They chose to stay with a broke-down district because they believed in what we were doing. Matter of fact, when the contract with HCA was broken, that hospital was in threat of being closed down that night because they were basically fired or laid off, but they stayed. It was a critical time where the hospital would have been shut down had those employees left. They stayed without pay because they knew that the state would shut the hospital down and our license would have been, it wouldn't have been an involuntary suspension, what we did. I bring that up because employees are key to any organization. You're recognizing some people here. I think that's really good. We've had a lot of turmoil on the board. We've had turnover. When, before I got on, we had Dick Johnson, and God rest his soul, and Bill Postaway, who's very well-known, quit because of Alberto, of constant accusations of safety code and Brown Act violations. And what we're dealing with here is somebody that's constantly crying wolf, and I can handle that. I've got a thick skin. There's only two things I know. I know cattle, and I know employees. I've managed employees since I was 23 years old, and when I came onto the board, most of the employees said they were going to quit. And my focus is on operations. We've got a job to do. We've got to bury people. It's just like the hospital. You've got to treat people, you've got to bury people, we've got to mow the grass. When you've got almost all the crew wanting to quit because of a trustee's actions and behavior, it's pretty bad. I asked them to give me a chance. So we've turned a lot of things around. We're doing a good job. But the one thing that we're not able to turn around is the constant accusations and of employees not doing their job right. We've provided no training. We have a, I want to recognize one of our employees, Leonor Castaneda, who's been critical and who's performed a wonderful job with no training. Board denied her training. We've tried to get her training. We've lose that vote. She had to figure a lot of things out on her own. She's had to call the county, and we're just under constant bombardment of, we're doing this wrong, we're doing that wrong. By the way, we work really closely with county council, with Barbara Gunwald. She's been excellent. Every time there's an accusation, it's dealt with, and we run it through her, and she gives us our legal opinion. If we need to adjust something, we do that. So we're being ran right, but the one, the one thing that I think is why our employees still put up with us, because they can go work anywhere. Is there a time clock here?
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is that a minute? I still got a minute?
A minute over.
Oh, sorry, apologize. I'll wrap it up. Is, they need a board that believes in them, because they can go work other places, and you cannot hire, you just can't go hire somebody to go dig a grave. They'll be over into the other grave. It takes a while to train people like that. So I'm coming here today on behalf of the employees, not for myself. Anyway, thank you for letting me go over.
I have a request from Mary Bryant. State your name and address for the record, and both microphones are on and available.
Hi, Mary Bryant. My address is 15634 Beachwood Avenue in Ivanhoe. Actually, this is Red Letter Day. This is the first time I have been here, and not about Moone Grove Park, so that will be coming up this next year, okay? I just want to say that I've been a member of caring cause, support Tulare Public Cemetery for about two, three years, since Mr. Avila came on board. I do know how important it is to have board members who don't necessarily agree 100% on every issue 100% of the time, but at least to have a difference of opinion and meet somewhere in the middle to resolve issues. I am president and executive director of the Real Moone Grove Project. It's very difficult to find board members that are not there to constantly hold up the meetings and have them drag on for hours and hours. So one of the board members that was on Tulare Public Cemetery, Philip Deal, is now on my public, on my board of directors. I could only wish that Mr. Avila would accept a position on my board of directors. He's done an excellent job. He was a member of my Moone Grove group on social media before he became on the board. I would not recommend that Mr. Aguilar be reappointed to his position. I have been to many, many board meetings for the public cemetery. I watched it online. The meetings drag on for hours and hours and hours. I mean, issues that I feel could best be resolved without carrying on and on at a board meeting. So with that being said, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another public comment request from Steve Prezant.
Good morning, Chair. My name is Steve Prezant, and I live at 317 Mitchell Avenue in Tulare. And like Alberto said, I am also one of the trustees on the Tulare Public Cemetery District. I'm the vice chair. I wanted to talk about the three people that were up for appointment to the, to the board for reappointment and appointment to the board, and I want to do it in three stages. I want to talk about some good things about the cemetery district, some things that aren't so good, and perhaps a couple of recommendations I have for the board. First of all, the Tulare Public Cemetery District has some terrific, seven terrific employees. They're the biggest asset that the cemetery district have. And the improvements that have gone on in this cemetery district in the last couple of years are really quite extensive. Our budget, last fiscal year, we made a little over $100,000 on an $800,000 operating budget. This at a time when I go through the Auditor Controller's website, and I can see for all those public cemetery districts in this county that use the county, half of them lost a little bit of money, half of them gained a little bit of money. We're doing financially very well. Calpers, our employees receive Calpers retirement. We're in the black. We have excess. How many government agencies can really kind of claim that? And of course, we've just initiated a website. This next year, I think we'll have a database of internments that are there. So the foundation for the cemetery is there. Unfortunately, the governance just needs a little bit improvement. And I kind of think of, when I think of appointments for the, for the board, I kind of think of James Dobson, who was a, ran the Focus on the Family for a year. He had a very, I think, wise quote. He says, "Don't marry the person who you can learn to live with. Marry the individual who you can't live without." I think that applies for spouses. I think that applies for employees you hire. But maybe that also applies in good measure for the board that you choose, the board members that you choose. And I think you really need to pick those people that you say, how did the board do without them? And currently, we have three names up for consideration. I support Xavier Avila and Jim Pennington. I don't support the third. I don't think that, that standard has been met. I do support Linda Malloy, who submitted her application, had an extensive resume. I think she'd do a fantastic job, and I wish her name was under consideration. So that's my recommendation, to consider Xavier Avila, Jim Pennington, and Linda Malloy. And if you feel that you can't do that today, maybe my second recommendation is, can we wait a month and let the community bring forward some other really fantastic people that really do meet that high level? Can our board, how do we, how does a board do so long without this person? I think we need to set our standards really high. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on item 25? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Alberto Aguilar. I live in Tulare. I have lived in Tulare for over 30 years, and I come here before you to go ahead and refute the allegations that are being made by Mr. Avila regarding our district manager or office manager not being afforded any training. That's not true, okay? We encourage employees and we encourage staff to get as much training as they possibly can. I have intended training. Every time that it's come up, I provide you all with a copy of, with my application of the training that I have gone to. Unfortunately, we have board members.
Please address this board.
Like Mr. Avila, that has not attended any training because he doesn't desire to do so. Mr. Avila claims that I'm not doing my job. In fact, I'm doing my job, and I'm trying to educate, when I come back from the training, the other board members. We have a board meeting next, tomorrow, at the cemetery. I've invited one of the attorneys from the California Association of Public Cemeteries to come down and help educate the rest of the members, of the trustees, as well as staff, on some of the things that are being done that are inconsistent with state laws and with the policies of our cemetery. When we went ahead and we applied for the position voluntarily, and we have appointed, we took an oath. And that oath entailed upholding the Constitution of the United States as well as the Constitution of the State of California. Article 16, Section 6 of the California Constitution specifically prohibits the gift of public funds. That has been an ongoing issue at the Tulare Public Cemetery. The Tulare Public Cemetery, right now, is being investigated by Tulare County Grand Jury. They're investigating the finances of the cemetery. If you were to go ahead, and I encourage you, to take a look at the agenda for tomorrow's meeting, and one of the items on there is gift of public funds. We cannot continue to go ahead and give away the public funds. It's prohibited by statute, okay? You cannot go ahead and give employees gifts in form of bonuses. It's against the law. These are the kind of things that are being investigated by the grand jury, and all I can do is try to educate the staff, the trustees, from the information that I gathered at the trainings that I've attended, and I will continue to do that as long as I'm on that board. My job is to go ahead and not only to follow the government codes of the cemetery, which are in Health and Safety Code 900 to 1983, but also all the other government codes regarding all the other things that we have to deal with, finances. We have a revolving fund at the Tulare Public Cemetery that's not being done in accordance to the codes. I didn't make the codes, but I know how to read, and I know how to go ahead and ask for help. I've kept Vanderpool informed of what's been going on at the cemetery. I've kept the district attorney informed of what's going on at the cemetery, and I've gotten an email from county council telling me that I'm not to contact the supervisors because the supervisors can't do anything. I can share that email with you all, okay? That I'm not to contact you, and I'm not to contact the district attorney's office. Well, under my freedom of speech, I have a right to go ahead and contact whoever I want to regarding the problems that are going on. So as I mentioned earlier, the grand jury is investigating the cemetery due to the financial problems that we have, okay? When I requested to put some of these items on the agenda, Mr. Avila has denied my request to deal with those items in-house where they should be dealt with.
Alberto, could you wrap up your comments?
I'm wrapping it up right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Vanderpool?
Mr. Chair, I'll make just a few comments. I have to say that this is probably the most extensive appointment process this board has ever considered for a appointment to a various board or commission that we have the ability to appoint to. I actually have received a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails. I've received as many phone calls and emails in support of certain individuals and as many opposed to certain individuals. So there's two sides of every coin. I believe that the differing of opinions is, is okay, is actually welcomed in, in public service, and from, from my perspective, I look at what the cemetery is today, and I compare it to what it was when it first really rose to a level of concern that came to the board of supervisors, and I've met with all of the people that have been involved because I feel like that's my, my job to do that, and I believe the cemetery is moving in a very positive direction. I hope that there isn't any effort by any individual to get rid of or affect any of the employees that are there, because employees are a part of the organization that makes the cemetery what it is and serves the public the way that the cemetery is supposed to. So from my perspective, the two incumbent board members that have been, that reapplied for their position, seeking reappointment, I am recommending both of those be reappointed, and that is Mr. Xavier Avila and Mr. Alberto Aguilar. And then I've also suggested the appointment of a gentleman who, from looking through the applications, has a very extensive board history and experience in Mr. Pennington, and I look forward to the work that he will do on the cemetery. So I want to thank everyone who submitted an application. I did take it all very seriously and through very thorough consideration, and those are the recommendations that I'm making to the board here today.
Very good. Supervisor Valero?
Yes. So whenever there is conflict, for me, the one thing that I often tell myself is, a house divided cannot stand. A house divided cannot stand, and I think that this also speaks to a larger issue of authentic community and authentic connection. And my hope is that through this bit of conflict, that it will move forward to something even better and brighter. So just to let you know, teamwork makes the dream work, and I believe that that is possible here for this cemetery district.
Do you have any more quotes of encouragement?
No.
Careful what you ask for. Any other comments by members of the board? Seeing none, or entertain a motion?
I have approval of staff recommendations.
We have a motion by Supervisor Shucklin.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously, 5-0. We'll now take up item 29. I believe there are some corrections.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Britt and Ms. Flores. For item 29, we'd like to request, I'm sorry, this is Brooke Sisk, General Services Agency Assistant Director. We would like to request to amend this item and remove the last requested item number
Very good. Any questions, comments regarding this item by members of the board or public? If not, entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Move by Supervisor Shucklin.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your votes. And the motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we will take up item five, our public hearing. This is a public hearing on appeals of Planning Commission's approval of special use permit number 19-040. The public hearing is now open, and we will begin with the staff report.
Chairman Crocker, supervisors, CAO, county council. I am Aaron Bach, Assistant Resource Management Agency Director for the appeal of special use permit number PSP 19-040, Planning Commission Resolution Number 9681, Willard Canarosi for the Sunshine Paradise Guest Ranch. By way of background, the proposal uses to create an eco-friendly, luxury, low-key, solar, off-grid guest ranch specifically for wellness and mindfulness for a maximum of 15 people, per condition of approval. Two single-story rental cabins with bathrooms and kitchen facilities and a bathroom structure for the five teepees. That is the guest ranch right there. Two single-story rental cabins with bathroom and kitchen facilities and a bathroom structure for the five teepees. The largest single structure, the bathhouse, measures 10 feet by 20 feet. Two residences are allowed by right and are not part of the guest ranch. Property caretaker will live in one, the owner will vacation in the second. Tents used temporarily by family members in vacations, on vacations are allowed by right. The location is south side of South Fork Drive, approximately 9.5 miles east of Three Rivers, and there are two appellants in this case. The first appellant's are the applicants themselves, the Canarosi and Willard. They're appealing conditions 2, 25, and 30. And the second appellant's, mostly in opposition, are Matthias Herregis and others, appealing the Planning Commission's decision to approve. So what was the Planning Commission's decision? Beginning back in July 31, 2019, appellants appeared before the Planning Commission. The discussion revolved around the fire, potential for fire and conditions of South Fork Drive. After After an hour of discussion, matter was continued to date uncertain. On October 16, 2019, after more discussion, the commission continued the item again for two weeks for staff to meet with representatives of the interested parties. Staff was told by the planning commission to meet with the other parties. On October 28, 2019, staff met with the agents for the parties. And based on that conversation, recommended conditions were added to the resolution. On October 30, 2019, the planning commission added conditions of approval requiring relocation of teepees 50 feet further from the river and limiting parking to 15 spaces maximum. Later added conditions two and 25 requiring minor modifications to go to the planning commission and condition 30, which disallowed short-term rentals of the caretaker's facility and the residence that was being built by the owner. Both of those are allowed by right. On October 30, 2019, the planning commission approved PSP 19-040 through Resolution 9681 by a vote of four to two. So, here's a vicinity map showing the location of the use permit along South Fork Drive. Here's a site plan of the facilities using four acres of the 40-acre parcel. Here you can see the location of the teepees that were already constructed. Pictures of the teepees, as you can see in the background there, showing the placement looking down from the above ridge. These are the proposed bear-resistant garbage and food storage containers that is proposed by the applicant. Here's a picture of South Fork Drive. And here's also pictures of the regrading of the existing driveways through the project Here's the proposed cabin locations for cabin number one and cabin number two and the setting on fairly flat ground. So, there's a big question, and the opposition continues to question this matter about the 1981 foothill growth management plan, changing the boundaries for corridor development. If you look at our figure 4.1 in our general plan and you see the brown development corridors, they were changed roughly around that time from the 1977 plan to what they are and still are in the 2012 general plan, which concurrently adopted back in the 80s, the foothill agricultural AF zone. So, they were done concurrently. The FGMP intentionally divides the corridor development and had zoned those properties within the development corridors to PDFM, the planned development foothill mobile home overlay zone, allowing development for subdivisions and retail commercial development, but only in the development corridors. The development corridor projects require first and second criteria for creation. Let me restate that. The levels of criteria are based on the creation of the development corridors. These are not development standards. All the projects in the development corridors, unless they're isolated projects like we experienced last year, requires PDs, planned developments, master development plans like Gilco Ranch or Newtown's, which require development standards. The board did not change the AF zone in 81 or 2012 under section 10.3, where use permits allow guest ranches specifically and less intensive camping and lodging and more intensive uses as well. Pretty consistent with our AE zoning. The FGMP development inside and outside development corridors will be controlled on a site-specific basis. That is stated in our general plan. Staff still use development standards regardless. It's guidelines to make this a better project, hence the setback from the waterway, but would not unduly use these criteria levels that are not used for projects, but used for the creation of development corridors, as the second appellant suggests, for 15-minute response time that really no project outside of the development corridors would really meet. That's what the development corridors are for. Under the AF zone, section 10.3, section D, use permits, it states because of considerations of following uses are permitted in this zone if a use permit is first secured. In other words, under section 10.3D8, guest ranches or summer camps are permitted, less intensive uses if a use permit is first secured. More intensive as uses are, as stated, much more intensive uses as stated are allowed under section D. Section 2 defines guest ranches as buildings and premises offering recreational facilities for such pursuits as horseback riding, swimming, and hiking with living and dining accommodations. The county met its burden in addressing the section 16 requirements for general plan and zoning consistency and for health, safety, and welfare considerations. So, this is really what opposition's concerns could be boiled down to outside of their FGMP concerns. I would like to remind the board there are 68 conditions of approval on this project was just outside of our standard conditions. As far as a riparian setback, the reason for the FGMP development standard setback, septic tanks from the river, environmental health approved, CTLs, very qualified geotechnical engineers, septic design of two septic tanks, which will be located 300 feet uphill from the edge of the waterway. And that is consistent with the 100-foot setback requirements under the local agency plan. Bathrooms teepees are being located within 100 feet, 85 feet from perennial waterway, even though they are located in flood zone X. So, they're outside the flood zone X. Under the FGMP development standard guidelines was recommended for exception by staff. We wanted to be consistent, and the bathroom was approved by the planning commission. But the teepees were moved or are being directed to be moved 50 feet uphill by condition of approval, which applicant is not appealing at this time. So, even though they granted the exception and generally still forced or are going to force the applicant to move the teepees up the hill. In regards to fire, the fire department requirements, there's no open recreational fires will be allowed except in fire pits during low-risk times, generally in the winter, and outside of the spare of the air check before you burn times with caretaker oversight. So, the caretaker will be present on all, when all guests are visiting. The fire department recommended fire suppression water storage tank, and this is the totality of the fire department's recommendations for this project. The fire department recommended fire suppression water storage tanks, which you can see on the site plan. Vegetation cleared 100 feet minimum from the structures, 10 feet from each side of the driveway, and 15 feet vertical clearance. The structures are required to have fire sprinkler systems and carbon monoxide smoke detectors. That's for the cabins. Teepees are not structures under the building codes in this circumstance because it is not a campground. All teepee tents shall be fire marshal approved. So, they have another level of approval in front of them. The applicant has hired a consultant to conduct a field survey of ground disturbances to avoid all cultural resources. And that was a condition that has been there from the very beginning for this project that was put there by staff. So, appeal number one by the applicants, the first appellant appealed on November 12, 2019, citing condition of approvals number two and 25. And staff thought that would be, help address some of the concerns by opposition because any future changes, we'll have to go through this whole process again, no matter how minor or major. So, that these two conditions would again require that a planning commission hearing. And the appellant here, the applicant feels that this will cause future needless delays. But nonetheless, staff feels that's pretty consistent, having made the recommendation themselves. Condition number 30 prohibits Mr. Willard from using his and his caretaker's residence as short-term rentals. They feel this condition violates their legal rights. Staff's recommendation at this time, showing that COA's numbers two and 25 are consistent with the other use permits. We have put that condition on other projects before. Permit conditions of approval increasing the county's ability to protect the health, safety, and welfare and allowing the public to comment on future minor modifications. But that condition of approval number 30 was inconsistent with the Resource Management Agency's original recommendations. And in this case, we are recommending that that condition be stricken. The, in summarizing, appeal number two by Mathias Harrigas and others. He also filed his appeal in opposition to this project on November 12, 2019, citing five different reasons, which we will go over in detail. Inconsistency with the foothill growth management plan, insufficient emergency response access and egress, not meeting minimal criteria and findings for special use permits, insufficient monitoring and compliance plans, and the project is not categorically exempt from SEQA. And staff has responded to each one of these allegations. Just quickly, the first allegation is incorrect. This project is consistent with the foothill growth management plan. In regards to the emergency response access and egress of 15-minute response time, we find that with, that's all inapplicable in this instance. That is a criteria level in the creation of development corridors, not in use permit projects outside of those development corridors. The other development standards may apply. We find the third, not meeting minimum criteria and findings for special use permits without merit. We don't know where they got their criteria from, but I'll go into detail in a second about that. The fourth is the insufficient monitoring and compliance, a little presumptuous and overreaching, given there's no permit out there right now. And the fifth allegation is the project is not categorically exempt. That is speculative and baseless. Because of the evidence presented within the operational statement, staff reports, conditions of approvals in the resolution, and bind through discussions with the planning commission, which is all in the record, that are recorded in the minutes of the record. And those are in the staff report exhibits A1 through A4 in the agenda item. So, taking the first allegation, the appeal regarding the FGMP is incorrect. We've already discussed that matter, and this whole case really turns on that. The AF zone and PSP 19-040 is vertically consistent with the updated 2012 FGMP as stated previously. Guest ranches are in allowed use outside development corridors. The FGMP exceptions are allowed when there are limited or no impacts to the environment, as we've discussed, and to the welfare of its citizens and where there are no off-site improvement requirements. The language quoted from section 18.5, and we're not sure where they got that from, including planned development requirements is irrelevant to this project and the AF zone. It's not in the development quarters, not in the PDFM zone. The foothill agricultural land use designation allows the AF zone and specifically a guest ranch with a use permit as a guest ranch or summer camp, where buildings and premises, again, offering recreational facilities for such pursuits as horseback riding, swimming, and hiking with living and dining accommodations. And the development standards named are incorrectly attributed to a guest ranch as these were intended for new subdivision development. In regards to the second allegation, the FGMP requirement for new development response times is inapplicable to a guest ranch because section 3.12 of the FGMP response times is not applicable. Off-site roads with fire and medical response times apply to new development, not guest ranch uses. The Tulare County Fire Department, county fire only required sprinklers, firewater storage tanks, access, and fire marshal-approved teepees. County fire did not require an emergency evacuation plan. RMA included a condition of approval based on suggestions by opposition that the applicant consult with the county fire and create an emergency evacuation plan. The shelter in place until otherwise instructed statement was made by the county fire department related to a different unrelated project and not this project. The adjacent helicopter pad is not a recommendation, but merely pointed out as a fact. And county fire, county fire and CAL FIRE did not respond negatively to this project and found there to be sufficient response times and access and egress and does not suggest denial. In regards to allegation three, the use permit does meet section 16 requirements. Through the administrative record, appellants alleged five use permit requirements are without merit because the only standard required for section 16 use permits is under the zoning code requiring general plan, health, safety, and welfare consistency, which staff has proven has made those findings. Again, the project is consistent with the FGMP. The parcel existed before the 1956 zoning code adoption and before the size requirements from the 1981 addition of the AF zone to the zoning code. It also complies with the county subdivision code that was enforced in 1950, which made an exception for gift deeds. And therefore, the parcel allows two residences, as stated by right, on the 40 acres. In regards to the Williamson Act, it allows for a guest ranch with approved use permit per county uniform rules for agricultural preserves adopted by Board Resolution Number The California condor does not appear in the vicinity of the California natural diversity database as of June 2019. Staff again affirms that the FGMP Level One criteria is not applicable to guest ranch use permits, but for new development, development corridor creation projects. In regards to allegation four, the board finds the evidence provided by opposition of county non-enforcement regarding a different unrelated project, Redwood Ranch, is presumptuous and overreaching in placing their opinions of the county's enforcement policies above our own for the following reasons. Per county ordinance number 3493, the planning director has the discretion to immediately abate a violation that creates an immediate danger to the health, safety of persons or property. However, the fire department has inspected the site and the sheriff's office has been called to Redwood Ranch no less than six times since 2018 and has not verified or documented a single violation. The evidence provided consists of no expert evidence, as an attorney is not an expert in regards to noise or traffic. And the evidence is supported mostly by downloaded individuals' use of the facilities on their Facebook posts. There is a temporary permit, PSP 19-065, an administrative permit for Redwood Ranch for the, that county staff has been monitoring and has not been found to be in violation of any of its conditions. The monitoring and compliance plan for the subject Sunshine Paradise Ranch includes added conditions with monthly logs and quarterly inspections, more so than any other project. In the county, once in place by recorded resolution, then the adequacy of the performance of the conditions can be monitored for their sufficiency. So, it's not quite ripe yet to make those allegations. In regard to the final allegation, the project is categorically exempt from SEQA because, first of all, the planning commission found the project is categorically exempt pursuant to section 1506.1B3, the common sense rule. The environmental determination included a CRIS report and CNDDB mapping, as stated previously, and the limited natures of the project's impacts with 68 conditions of approval. The guest ranch is, the guest ranch use is consistent with the land use and zoning, and the land use and zoning is vertically consistent, as stated before. There are no significant effect exceptions that are applicable. Yes, SEQA has exceptions to the exemptions, but they are not applicable in this case. The common sense rule was used, not the class three exemption, as was being alleged. There is no substantial evidence put in the record, except for testimony without evidence as to potential impacts to cultural aspects. Without verification of proof of expertise or verification of any of the allegations received in testimony, the record shows that staff did not have an obligation to report this project to the Native American Historic Commission or to prepare tribal consultation, which is not required for a categorical exemption. There are no cumulative impacts just from having two use permits in proximity, as there is no evidence of any SEQA significant impacts being generated by the two projects. Just because there is a second project does not require an automatic cumulative analysis. This is affirmative statement of due process of law that was followed. We do not abridge any constitutional property rights, concurrence of the use of the planning commission's police power, and procedural adequacy. I could read that into the record, but I think it is sufficient to have it placed here. It's also in your agenda item and in the exhibit A on the appeal. So, the staff's recommendations, the public hearing is already open. Based on the findings set forth in exhibit A, staff is recommending the board deny item one of the Canarosi-Willard appeal and grant item two overturning the planning commission's decision regarding short-term rentals, and that the board denies the appeal of Harrigas at all. That completes staff's presentation. There are quite a few. There are quite a few members of our staff here as well, if you have any questions. And with that, I would suggest that appeal number one be heard.
Any questions from board members to staff at this time? Supervisor Valero?
So with regards to...
With regards to the short-term rental, would this be grandfathered into the existing ordinance, or would it be updated to satisfy the STR that we're currently working on now? Because I know that that was something that we put on hold moving forward, and so I'm kind of just confused on that.
Right, and given that they haven't gotten into the TOT process yet, it depends on the timing of it. If they do have this constructed before we come back with the new ordinance, they could potentially be grandfathered in.
Okay.
If you allow them to move forward with the short-term rental.
Any other questions for staff?
Aaron, how, how close is the closest neighbor? I mean, this is on 40 acres, so I wouldn't think they're...
Right, I believe there's a neighbor in fairly close proximity, just above the project, who spoke at many of the hearings, but, you know, within a few hundred yards at best from the edge of the property line.
Okay. And you don't see this any different than any of the other guest ranches that are currently existing in that area?
No, I would, I would not. There, and on top of that, there are, it's exceptional that we've added so many conditions of approval to this project, and as was added by the planning commission itself to try to address some of the concerns as best we could.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments for staff? All right, we are going to, each appellant will have an opportunity to state their appeal. And so the first appellant that we will take up is Michael Canarosi. Apologize if I mispronounce the name. We ask that you keep your presentation to 15 minutes or less. Either microphones available?
Yeah, my name is Michael Canarosi. It was pretty close. I have been resident Three Rivers for 30 years and have been hired by Mr. Willard. He's the owner of the property. And I've been, I've been serving as a resource advisor as the property had been looked at and the research done to come up with this proposal. I'd worked for first 12 years in Three Rivers, worked for the national park as a law enforcement officer and in the resource management division. After that, I'd been working as a general contractor in Tulare County, so I felt I was pretty well positioned to advise my client on how to go about a low-impact development in foothills and to work with the public that would be coming here, staying in these semi-remote conditions, not unlike campers coming to the national park, filled with high hopes, but needing some education as to reduce their impact on the land. So, pretty much is my purpose here, is technical advisor, and this is the owner of the project who can really tell you more about how, what it's all about and why we're doing it.
Thank you for taking the time, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kenneth Willard. I'm originally from Denmark. I live in New York, but I've been coming to LA for like many, many years, and California and Three Rivers. So, the idea that I have is that we all need a place that is like, really puts us back to nature, meaning off-grid living, meaning like, like a solar-powered, and, and, and just by doing that, I'm working together with a company called TechCell that has developed the newest batteries on, that will come on the market very soon, and they are like 100% recyclable, 40 years warranty, and, and, and it's going to be part of the whole idea of, that you come to a place that has like low footprint, but a place where you, you can have some comforts and it's like glamping, but it will like, kind of like make you think again about what is nature for us. This is what puts, puts us all like back to Mother Earth, and, and that's, that's the place where Sunshine Paradise Ranch is. Very low-impact, something like that. We're missing this from everything. Like, we can, we can, we can be in nature and we can have like our amenities and everything else, but it doesn't need to like have any footprint on, on, on our land. And this is like what I've, I've been coming to the land for like about five years. The neighbor was one of my friends that sold the land to me, so I fell in love with it, with my son, and just gave me the idea that this is a place that people in San Francisco that are burned out, or in the film business in LA that are burned out, they want to come back and sit there by the river and, and maybe do the yoga and, and for mindfulness and, and all these things that are included in this meditation and so on. So it won't be a place where there's like loud, crazy parties and, and, and things like that. It's not, it's not in my, my plan. It's a place for mindfulness, where we can like connect with nature again, but do it in a little bit more of a glamping, luxurious style, where you have a nice bed, and you can, yeah, you sleep in a teepee or you sleep in a little cabin, but you, you have like a nice little bed to sleep in, and, and, and that's, that's really it. Very simple and very low-impact, and that's my dream. I'm like, it's kind of like, very like, like Danish to do it like that. You can have luxury, but it's a different kind of luxury. It's like a, a luxury connected to Mother Earth, and the lighting is not very bright on the land. I'll tell you this, because yesterday I went to your new hospital, and I did a very good job putting my finger back in the right place. But I was lucky enough, when I fell with my seven-month baby, that I had my hand before it hit the chair, so, so it kind of like, it, it kind of like proves that the lighting is not very bright there. So, not to worry about that for sure. And of course, we're going to live by all the rules and regulations and everything else, and this is what you're doing. What are you showing us today? This is how it should be, you know, that we are being listened to as people, fairly, without somebody else's judging or anything else. It's, it's the pure idea that is, that is what is important and nothing else. And as long as that is like done, up to your rules, up to Laer County and, and California and, and, and all the fire concerns that we all have, of course, then we should be free to like let people like feel and, and smell the nature that you have around in your, in your backyard, instead of staying in like a concrete structure, you know? I give them another way to look at, look at life, and I think this will change people's mind about what they do and what they think about themselves and, and everything else. And, and that's important that we also have that. So, any questions?
Very good. Any questions by members of the board for the first appellant? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now take up the second appellant. Mr. Mathias, are we have, are we having a representative for the second appellant?
Yes, my name is Dennis V. Vicencio. I'm an attorney.
Very good.
From Three Rivers.
And I'm glad you pronounced the last name, because I wasn't sure about the spelling.
No problem. It's 13 letters. It's a mouthful. I'll step back a little bit. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yeah, hopefully our clerk can work on the feedback.
I thought maybe it was me, attorney and all, you never know.
Well...
So I want to introduce myself to the board here first. My family has also been in Three Rivers quite a long time. We moved there in 1972 originally, although I did spend time going to college, law school, practicing down in Southern California, San Diego specifically, for a number of years. I'm here to represent Mr. Harrigus, as well as the Keweeah Coalition in this matter. I spent, when I came back up to Three Rivers, I spent 13 years as an owner. I purchased one lodging facility, and then I purchased another lodging facility. Those were the Buckeye Tree Lodge and the Sequoia Village, and next to and across from the Gateway. I owned and managed those while still practicing law for 13 years. I sold them last year. I had the wonderful experience of probably dealing with 50,000 guests over the course of those 13 years. I came to learn a lot about the lodging industry that I certainly did not know prior to that. It was an exceptional learning experience. I am also, I have been a, I, when I came back up to Three Rivers, I also joined the Three Rivers ambulance, volunteer ambulance, served as an EMT, and I'm also a firefighter, paid call firefighter, Station 14 up in Three Rivers. I've ran over 1,000 calls. I am not here as a county employee. I'm not here as a county firefighter, but I can't come up here without those experiences as both a lodging owner, as well as a firefighter, knowing what I know. So again, I, you know, we ran medical aids, we still do vehicle accidents, all kinds of calls, rescues. One of the things that's most important that I learned, especially from the fire service, is foreseeability. Now, in, when I started on the fire department, we did not have a swift water task force, but we were doing a lot of swift water rescues. It was inherent in the job that people were going to go in the river because it's there and get themselves in trouble. We didn't have the proper training, we didn't have the proper equipment. We do that now, in part, great part, thanks to both Chief Norman, who has been a big supporter of the Swift Water Task Force and Swift Water Rescues, and we are now safely and effectively doing that, as well as the Board of Supervisors, who has supported the fire department in its endeavor. So, thank you. But what that foreseeability has done is, it has allowed me to look at a project like this with maybe a little different eye than perhaps the, the owner that would like to propose doing this business. I don't have any problem, and my client doesn't have any problem with the concept and, and what he wants to do. I, I think it's a good idea. Unfortunately, I think it's in a bad location. It's not where this should occur. There are many, many other places, whether it's along the river, whether it's in Three Rivers, in the development corridors, and other places where this type of development is appropriate, but this is not the place where it's, where it is appropriate. First of all, it's inherent with any development of this nature that you're going to have an increased need for fire services, ambulance, whether it's, you know, your hand or injuries, whatever. We affect a number of rescues, vehicle accidents. I've been up South Fork multiple times this year on motorcycles that went over the cliff into the river to, we just had a couple months ago, a wildland fire started at no less than a vacation rental. And luckily, it was at 1:00 in the morning, we were up all night, but we got the fire out effectively. These are risks that are going to occur, and they're exacerbated by putting development in areas where it's not appropriate. Now, in this instance, you're, we have a project that is in the absolute highest fire zone classification in the state of California according to CAL FIRE. Now, that's, that's not me. This is what CAL FIRE has, has looked at. It's on fire maps, they're aware of it. That's what it is. It's the very highest fire zone. The Tulare County Community Wildfire Protection Plan shows South Fork Road to have a relatively high frequency of fires. We know this. We've studied this from 1910 to 2008 is the study period, and they know that there's a high frequency of fires up South Fork, exactly where this property is located. It's going to happen. This is a foreseeable event. Now, the response time, unfortunately, for Tulare County or for CAL FIRE is 30 minutes. This is reflected in documentation that I can provide you if you'd like. Battalion Chief Andy Turner was, was asked by my clients, how long is it going to take to get to this property? Well, recent, one of the recent calls, it was in dry conditions, in the middle of the day, took 30 minutes to a response just below this property. Those are in optimal conditions. In a significant event, or if there's a fire or things going on, you can imagine that time is going to be extended. The Exeter ambulance, which is the chief response units to this particular location, were asked as well how long it would take, and they said in a letter that it would take 40 to 45 minutes in ideal conditions if the ambulance is in Lemon Cove. Now, they also said, but, you have to understand frequently that ambulance, as we know, is posted down the hill. It's pulled for various reasons. So, the response time may be significantly longer. We also know, or I, I know, and my fellow firefighters know, that communications in that canyon is extremely difficult. Radio towers are difficult to hit. We've got to try and hit Blue Ridge or other repeaters. You can't always get to Case, so, and cell phones don't work. It's not like we can call FireCom or we can just get ahold of whoever we want to, whenever we want to. It's not like being in, in the city. It's not like the agriculture zones that are down on the valley floor. This is up in the mountains, and it is difficult to access. Why is this so important here? Because in the event of a fire, an evacuation of those facilities is critical. Now, I heard Mr. Bach state that county fire had looked at the ingress and egress of this and made no determination. That's not true. There has not been an evaluation of whether or not this property can be safely evacuated in the event of a significant wildfire or other type of event. There has, what they looked at, what, what the county and CAL FIRE look at when they go in there is they look at structures, see if there are fire sprinklers, see if there's sufficient water for putting out a fire, but you got to understand, it's going to take us 30 minutes to get there before we can start utilizing that, that water that's already there. So, in the event of a significant fire event, let's look at what happened in Paradise. 85 people were killed because you couldn't get out of the town, and that's exactly the issue here, is there's only one way into South Fork. There's no alternative route. You're not going to get out of there if you're in there and a fire starts and blows up. Typically, the winds blow up the canyon during the day when it's hot, as the air rises. I mean, this is a, this is a standard, and so anybody up that canyon is potentially trapped in a situation and can't get out. So, the example is Paradise. Another fire that happened in September of this year in the town of Cool, which is in the foothills east of Sacramento, at an elevation of 1,500 feet, almost identical to what we have here, you had only an 85-acre fire, and you had a, two firefighters in a, in an engine were burned over. They know what they're doing. They had to deploy their fire shelters, which they're trained to do. They survived. The engine was toast, absolutely burned to the crisp. Folks, if you start putting or allowing these guest ranches with, here we have 15, 20, 30, 40 people, when you start adding up all the cabins, vacation rentals, all the things that they want to do, and then the other venue that's proposed, which is Redwood Ranch, 250 people up this road, how are you going to get these out? Are they going to shelter in place? Are they gonna, are they gonna sit in the river? It's the gases, it's the hot gases that, that kill you in these events. They're not going to have nomex. They're not going to have the fire training that you need to withstand and survive a, a fire burnover. It's impossible. Those people are going to perish. This is what is a foreseeable event. This is what you, as a planning commission, have to look at, or I'm, strike that, I'm sorry, as the Board of Supervisors have to look at and say, well, maybe it's a good idea, Mr. Willard, but maybe not in this location. If you want to build your houses, we have no problem with you exercising your property rights and saying, and building your two homes that you want to build. If you want to enjoy the premises as you have indicated, there's no problem with that. But it's a whole nother situation to take out a special use permit and go in there and build a facility for people to come up and enjoy and expect that they're going to be safe and it's a proper place for them. Now, where are they going to be staying? They're going to be staying in teepees. That's not going to provide any shelter, any more than a vehicle is. Vehicles and, and structures such as teepees are going to be of no help whatsoever in a, in a serious fire or, or an issue, whether they start it, whether it started down the hill, whatever, wherever it's from. There's going to be nowhere to run, and there's going to be nowhere to hide. You can't jump in the river and with a snorkel and, because of the hot gases and what's going on. So, one of the things that has come up is the issue with the teepees and whether or not they are structures. Well, the building code may say that they're not structures, but if you look through the Tulare County Fire Department memorandum on tents and other membrane structures, they are structures. It, it defies the imagination to think that a teepee that's built with lodge poles or all these are not structures, but be that as it may, if a tent or, the memorandum says that tents or other membrane structures erected for a period of more than 180 days within a 12-month period on single premises are considered to be permanent. Permanent use of tents, awnings, or other fabric enclosures, including membrane structures, shall be... or other fabric enclosures, including membrane structures, shall be submitted to the appropriate building department for approval. Folks, if you're going to, if you're going to build something like this, you're going to put these up there, these are essentially permanent commercial lodging facilities. There are no fire sprinklers. There's virtually no safety that comes along with building a hotel, a motel, a house, whatever. You know, we, we heard in the planning commission that a fence is a structure. There's, there's more regulation on building a fence than there is putting people and housing them in TPs in this. I say if you want to go up there and you want to hang out and live in a TP and do that, that's fine. That's your own thing, but asking the board to approve this type of a special use permit for this activity, I don't think that that's appropriate. I don't think it's safe, and the, the foreseeability of, of harm is, is inherent. This is clearly a commercial lodging development in every way, shape, and form. I mean, I, I managed and owned one for thirteen, two of them actually, for thirteen years. This, this is an endeavor that's built for profit. Now, I, I don't doubt Mr. Willard's desire to provide a wonderful atmosphere for his guests. I commend him. I think that's great. But again, this is not the place, ten miles up, South Fork, where you can't get out, you can't get in, other than the one road, and let's talk about the road. That road is narrow and windy and curves. In some places, that road is ten feet wide, only ten feet wide. That means you can't get two vehicles passing each other at the same time. That means if, if there is a fire and people are trying to evacuate and a fire truck's coming up, somebody's got to back up. Now, you can back a fire truck up downhill, but it's dangerous. I personally have probably backed up fifty vehicles in the parking lots of the hotels that I own because a lot of folks from the city, when they get up here in the country roads and there's cliffs over the side, they can't back up. It's a difficult experience, especially when you're in unfamiliar territory, possibly at night, and you have the possibility of going off a cliff. Now, interestingly enough, Mr. Willard has a website for his project, and that website shows things that are a little bit different than what you've been told about here. So, for example, we've been hearing about the five TPs, but if you go on their website, they specifically state that there are six TPs. There are four eighteen-foot round Native American-style TPs, one eighteen-foot Eastern Indian Kirati tent, and a thirty-foot ceremonial TP designed to comfortably seat, remember you heard that this was for fifteen guests? Here's what their website says. Designed to comfortably seat thirty adults. This is not me. This is Mr. Willard. So, we also know that they're only supposed to have ten people per night, but their website says, at the bottom on the first page where it says about, it says, "Note: Paradise Ranch provides sleeping accommodations for up to twenty adults per night." Folks, we're, we haven't even got the permit yet for this, and they're advertising this on the internet for up to twenty people, sleeping accommodations, and they're telling you that they have a tent that will seat thirty adults comfortably. What are these tents used for? Well, activities on the ranch include everything from target practice, off-roading, and it also includes group cacao ceremonies. I, I don't know what that is. I'm sure it's something that's harmless, but group cacao ceremonies and, and shooting guns and weapons, to me, don't go together. That's just my thing. Maybe it's a safety issue. We also heard that, that it's, this is only an acoustic only, and that there will be no amplified music, but on their website, they advertise that ATVs, music instruments, and sound equipment are also available for use. So, interestingly enough, if you go to the, the accommodations, their website also advertises that they have, they offer in the TPs heated beds and fans, although I'm not sure how that's supposed to happen since these are supposed to be TPs with no power and electricity. Perhaps Mr. Willard can explain that one. Now, the, we're told that, I'm, strike that, despite the fact that this special use permit is still pending, there were rumors that I was called about and told that this ranch was actually being rented out. So, I went on their website, and on December seventh, I booked a room, the goddess room and TP for a December ninth arrival. I put it in my name, not trying to hide anything. I put it on my credit card, and in fact, they provided me a, with a confirmation. I'm happy to provide any of this to the board if they'd like it, and they, they charged me three hundred dollars on my credit card, and they sent me a confirmation, and it wasn't until the ninth, when I was supposed to arrive, that I sent them an email and said, "I need to cancel this reservation", and I called Ms. April Hill at RMA and said, "What's going on with this, folks?" You know, "I got a reservation." Well, of course, I presume she called them because ten minutes later I got a, "Oh, we've canceled your room. We're so sorry. That wasn't supposed to have been booked." So, I don't know what's going on with that, but I can tell you, my credit card still hasn't been refunded, so Mr. Willard still owes me three hundred dollars. Maybe I'll try and get that after the hearing here. I want to talk a little bit about some of the sequoia issues, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I'm aware of the time, and I'm trying to keep it brief. Some of the sequoia issues that, that need to be discussed are the traffic, the noise and the light pollution that are inherent with, with lodging, especially the traffic on a dangerous road that includes open range. This really is ag land. It's, we're not making this up. This is foothill ag with, with, you know, you can see the cows and the bulls and all that wandering around on the road up there. The noise is inherent, especially where you intend to shoot guns and ride ATVs, which were not disclosed in the documents which were filed and provided, but they are listed on the internet. So, we also have some Native American concerns, which there is a gentleman here, Mr. Kenneth Woodrow, who will discuss some of those issues, and the impacts to wildlife. Now, National Park Service and Fish and Wildlife were not advised of the full scope of either Sunshine Ranch or Redwood Ranch, let alone the cumulative effects of both. There are a number of threatened or special species of concern up there, and you're going to hear not just so much on this particular project, but on Redwood Ranch at a later time, that the amount of light, noise, everything else that's come out of there has been extravagant. So, let's talk a little bit about the Foothill Growth Management Plan, because that's really the critical key here in determining whether or not this is appropriate or even allowed. The Foothill Growth Management Plan covers, this, covers six hundred and seventy-five thousand acres, which includes Sunshine Paradise Ranch, and there are three objectives, three objectives in the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and I think it's really important to just go right to the heart of what the Foothill Growth Management Plan is about. The objective one is to rationally direct urban and suburban growth into specific areas of the foothills in order to protect a fragile environment and preserve important agricultural land. This does not do that at all. It does the exact opposite. This is taking agricultural land and turning it into commercial lodging facilities. That is not either a preservation of the environment or a preservation of important land, and it is not directing the growth into specific areas of the foothills, but outside those urban development boundaries, outside the corridors which have been designated. You can hear RMA talk about what the growth corridors mean, or what they, what they really are, but the, even a, a literal reading of this is that that's where the growth should be occurring, not outside that in response, in areas where response times are excessive. Number two objective is maintain the agricultural viability of the foothills by identifying areas to be maintained or encouraged for intensive and extensive agriculture uses. It certainly does not meet that, and number three, accommodate urban rural growth in the areas serviceable by the state and/or county agencies in a manner which is cost-effective, safe, and consistent with the environmental constraints. Well, I've talked about the fire and safety and the ambulance and the issues that are associated with that. It's, it's very important to remember that this is, this is agricultural land. This is a zone that is not by right. It's not a property right that Mr. Willard has to develop this. So, I think property rights are important. I think probably most of you do as well, but that doesn't mean that any development in any location is an appropriate idea, or that is something that this board should approve, or let alone encourage. And by allowing these things, we open this up, and we're going to start putting more and more development into areas that are not serviceable by the county, that are difficult and that are inappropriate. If you look through the, the Foothill Growth Management Plan, it talks about the non-corridor areas. They represent lands, and this is on page three of the Foothill Growth Management Plan, the general plan, "Non-corridor areas of the foothills represent lands which do not have developmental potential at this time because of factors such as physical features, lack of access, or service response times. Non-corridor areas are used primarily for livestock grazing, open space, wildlife habitat, watershed protection, and intensive agricultural uses. It is the intent of the FGMP to employ a zoning designation which will ensure that these properties be maintained in agricultural operations and open space uses." For sure, this project is not consistent with that. It's not consistent with the, the design, the rules of the Foothill Growth Management Plan. I'm not going to go through all of these, but-
Could you wrap it up, Dennis?
I will. I will try.
I have confidence in you.
Thank you. Last but not least, I, I'm going to, I'm going to skip over a lot of the foothills' growth management plan. I think that many of you are, as the board supervisors, you're very familiar with this plan. You know what the ideas are. You know what, what the idea behind this is to keep the agricultural lands, to keep all these things, and again, this is not something that, that Mr. Willard can't come out and enjoy his land in a way can, in a consistent, in a, in a manner consistent with what's there, what's his neighbors, the surrounding areas. Councilmember Shuklian had a question about the other guest ranches in the area. There are no other guest ranches in the area. This is the only, this is the first one. There's a second proposed guest ranch, and I, I want to tell you that, you know, you can call pretty much anything a guest ranch under the very broad umbrella that is a guest ranch. Really, this is, these are just short-term vacation rentals, whether it's in a TP or it's in a cabin. They're like the three hundred other vacation rentals that are in Three Rivers. There are no other guest ranches out here. There are some short-term vacation rentals on South Fork, for sure, but there are none this far out.
There are no other guest ranches in Three Rivers?
No, there are no other guest ranches out South Fork.
My question was regarding-
Oh, in Three Rivers. No, there are, there are some guest ranches in Three Rivers, very limited number, but again, it depends on what you classify as a guest ranch or what something calls itself. But out, out on South Fork and out in, in these areas that are beyond the, the growth corridors or outside the area that is Three Rivers, no. To my knowledge, there are no other guest ranches. So, this is going to set a dangerous precedent. Last but not least, the special use permit process is, of course, to be sure that this is consistent with the county's general plan, which is the Foothill Growth Management Plan, that it's consistent with, and compatible with neighboring land use and zoning, which is all ag or residential right now, and that's how most of the folks that you're going to hear speak today want it to remain, and that a special use permit, that the public and private roads providing access to the subject property meet the necessary standards to provide safe and adequate access, and that's not the case. Now, it's fine for going out to the national park to go out and camp and hike up there, but it's not appropriate. These roads are not appropriate for these types of commercial developments. So, thank you very much. At the end of, if you have any other further questions or you'd like documentation as to anything that I discussed today, I'd be happy to address that.
I have another question.
Yes.
You mentioned a website. I haven't been able to find a website.
I can give it to you. It is, sun, I think it's sunshineparadise.me. And I can give you the printouts off of the website if you would like to make it easier right now.
Any other questions for the second appellant by members of the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next we'll have the, a rebuttal from the first appellant, but before we do that, I'm going to have a five-minute recess break, and so when we come back at eleven eleven, we will take up the rebuttal for the, from the first appellant. So, if everyone could please take a seat, if available, and we will continue on with public hearing. At this time, the first appellant may use time for rebuttal. This will be your only opportunity for rebuttal, and we ask that you limit your time to five minutes.
... which was an experimental website that was kind of a sounding board by the staff in New York prior to even our first public meeting. So, as these ideas were being bounced, bounced back and forth from each other, they just got put on this website.
Yeah, and it's, if we're going to investigate, it's like, it's, it's how you do it. It's like a work in progress, and I'm a photographer. We do creative things all, all the time. My staff is like working and coming up with ideas, and nothing has been rented out. All the dates have been blocked out by mistake. Dander, my assistant, only blocked it out until, I think, I don't, I'm not sure about the date. It was in December, end of November, and then boom. Dennis, which is very welcome to come stay with us, will get, will get to stay with us later, but, but it was refunded like as soon as we figured out how we could refund him, but it's just a test idea and website, yes.
So, there's, there's nothing built up there. There is, there's no place to rent. There's nothing there.
Has never been rented out, nothing.
It was all a mistake, and I, I guess he, we got a gotcha, so, good job. I'd like to talk real quickly about ag land. For those of you who haven't seen that area, this isn't really what you call pastoral valuable ag land has been portrayed. If you've been in that upper canyon, there, there is some cattle grazed, but when you get to know that area and talk to the local ranchers, you know that that's eighty to a hundred and twenty acres per head of sustainable cows, and they have to be fed during the winter anyway, even with that. So, we've got four acres that would be officially, I guess, out of production in Tulare County, and to my calculations, at eighty to a hundred and twenty acres ahead, we may have a hoof and a foreleg out of production. So, I think that was, that was a little dramatic. But something that was, that is really important to address is the, the fire danger up there, and we, we totally agree. You know, there is, you know, there's a danger of fire in foothills, but I don't want to make it overblown either. All the precautions will be taken. Before Tulare County even thought of it, when we were looking at the short-term rentals, before the, the reducing the outside campfires was even brought up, we'd already, in our, in our writings to develop our project, we'd already internally outlawed all wooden charcoal fires outside of fire season to reduce that. We have a full-time caretaker, twenty-four-hour caretaker onsite. Any violations of that, caretaker's right there to take care of that, and people would be asked to, to leave if that were the case.
And I would like to add to this that my private house, which is going to be like a bunker, which is like called an earth house, built into the wall, all concrete, will be the safest structure in, on all of South Fork, and of course, in case of fire, everybody's a, is welcome there, and the same with the Paul's, the caretaker's house, would be also like made out of concrete, built in. It's called an earth house, very energy efficient. You hardly use any energy because it's like, it stays the same temperature.
If I could expand on that a minute, we already have a permit. Part of the requirements is that we have a full-time caretaker. So, the caretaker's house is called a terradome. It's a concrete building, earth-sheltered, and it is totally safe for fires, and if there were a fire in the canyon that we could, with only fifteen people, we can shelter fifteen people inside essentially a concrete bunker underground at, at that point. Also, for fire protection, since we're off-grid, and of course, this is all yet to be developed. We haven't started this yet, but once private well is built and our water tanks are in, and we get permission to go ahead, we'll be storing ten to fifteen thousand gallons of water on the highest part of the property. So, in the event of a fire, we have an advantage unlike most places, even in, even in downtown, downtown Three Rivers, is that we have gravity water to the highest part of the property. downtown Three Rivers, is that we have gravity water to the highest part of the property. The highest part of the property is probably 1,100 feet beneath where the guest ranch is situated. So we'll have this all water stored so that if there were a fire and if the solar plant failed and the backup generator failed and the portable generator failed, we've got gravity, and we're going to count on that for quite a few years to come. And I think this will help mitigate fire issues that could happen up there. And I'd like to answer, turn now to answering any questions.
Any questions?
Five minutes comes pretty quick, so...
Thank you. No questions.
No questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody? Okay, we will now open the public comment portion of the hearing, so... Counselor? Public comment, yes? Okay. Got to make sure I'm doing things right. So if you, I know I have a couple of requests. If you did not fill out a form to expedite things, we'd ask that you please fill out a form. It's not mandatory, but it helps with processing. So the first individual that is requested to comment is Greg Schwaller. That's followed by Lori Schwaller. If you do have forms, please submit them to the clerk.
I'd like to reverse your...
That's fine.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Lori Schwaller. I live at 438-57 South Fork Drive in Three Rivers. I, along with everyone I know on South Fork, am opposed to this categorical exemption and SUP for many reasons, most of which are cited and documented in your attachments to this agenda item. While Sunshine Paradise Ranch is only about nine and a half miles up from State Highway 198, it's at least a 25 to 30-minute drive each way. It is beyond Three Rivers' development boundary, beyond the South Fork Development Corridor, beyond the paved road. In the Foothill Agriculture Zone regulated by the FGMP, which aims to protect its environment, native species, and way of life, extensive agriculture, primarily grazing, unnatural landscapes, with a minimum parcel size of 160 acres and a few dwelling units allowed. We all rely on the FGMP to protect and preserve this priceless and irreplaceable environment because it is vital to the health, safety, and welfare of the whole county. These essential watersheds, woodlands, and habitats bring us clean surface water, recharge our dwindling groundwater, clean and cool our badly polluted air, build and hold soil, reduce flooding, and provide beauty and opportunities for recreation, wildlife, solitude, and wonder. Now, today, the negative impacts of global climate change are affecting us with increasing intensity, bringing worse droughts, greater heat, smaller snow packs, earlier snow melt, and greater uncertainty to planning and to our children's future. And so we must increase our efforts to strengthen our county's resilience through protection and careful management of the natural ecosystem services on which our lives depend. FGMP objectives are to rationally direct growth into specific areas of the foothills, not the Foothill Agriculture Zone, in order to protect this fragile environment and preserve important agricultural land, and to accommodate urban and rural growth in the areas serviceable by state and county agencies. Clearly, this luxury guest ranch could be located in other far more suitable places. Please don't approve this project. Don't set this unwarranted, damaging precedent. Don't allow this piecemeal approach to development that doesn't consider its whole and cumulative impacts. Consider Redwood Ranch as well. Weighing the provisions of the FGMP and the Foothill Agriculture Zone, our county's chronic water shortages and overdrafting, the local citizens' many concerns, and the pressing need to promote climate change resilience, we must tip the balance toward protecting this essential ecosystem and not the short-term interests of commercial ventures which should be located elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have Greg Schwaller, followed by Juliana Sligman.
Good morning, my name is Greg Schwaller. I live at 438-57 South Fork Drive in Three Rivers. Please do not approve the categorical exemption and special use permit for Sunshine Paradise Ranch in this location. In the Foothill Management Plan, the county encourages recreational and visitor-serving development in the foothills. But the plan states that development is to be avoided in naturally sensitive areas wherever possible. The county shall discourage development close to watercourses and riparian habitat and prevent encroachment into them, yet it's already allowed Sunshine Paradise to deviate from the 100-foot buffer for the river, which was in, is in place for very good reasons. The county has already attached 68 conditions of approval to this project in response to the public's concerns. We don't know how many of them have been eliminated and satisfied. The plan states that the county shall encourage concentration of development along major travel routes to allow for future public transportation services and to minimize travel distances to frequently used facilities. It shall discourage the scattering of development throughout the foothills to reduce vehicular emissions. It shall ensure that development is located in areas that can be adequately served by existing Tulare County fire stations and sheriff's departments. Allowing Sunshine Paradise Ranch LLC to proceed as a commercial venue in so many respects, it sets a bad precedent and violates the spirit and the intent of the Foothills Growth Management Plan. Already, we are experiencing cumulative impacts from Redwood Ranch's illegal development as Sunshine Paradise Ranch is operating a mere mile and a half beyond it without a special use permit. There is no need, there is no need to push against the Foothills Growth Management Plan and AF zoning for these unnecessary developments that are negatively impacting the safety and quality of life of their neighbors and have great potential, especially due to their cumulative impacts, to negatively impact this environment which is so important to the health and economy of the county. Please do not set this precedent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Juliana, followed by Kathleen Sligman.
Good morning. The following observations have been submitted by SEQA attorney Amy Minter, whose firm has elected to take our case on pro bono because of the strong likelihood that a court ruling would be in our favor. The project description is rife with inconsistencies and inaccuracies. RMA claims both a Class III and common sense categorical exemptions from SEQA several times throughout the document. This doublespeak is misleading and confusing, and the distinction is very important on a procedural level. Additionally, there has been substantive evidence submitted to the county highlighting the numerous environmental impacts and hazards created by the project, which prevent the project from qualifying for an exemption under SEQA. The project, as you have heard, is in a very high fire severity zone with slopes over 30%, roadways that are shockingly substandard, and emergency response times that far exceed the required 15-minute attack time from a fire station. The sensitive location of the project prevents reliance on a categorical exemption. The project's cumulative impacts prevent reliance on a categorical exemption. Here, the county planning commission has recently approved the cumulatively considerable Redwood Ranch project less than two miles from the project in question. Further, the county cannot rely upon a categorical exemption where mitigation is required. The county is attempting to mitigate the adverse impacts associated with the project by imposing conditions of approval to address traffic, fire safety, and other potential impacts. The county cannot rely upon a categorical exemption due to impact on historical resources. The project location is a federally listed site of cultural and spiritual significance for the Wuxachi tribe. The county's general plan controls over zoning, and the project is inconsistent with the general plan. The county exempting the project from specific criteria for commercial recreation due to a unique natural feature is negligible. There are over 20 miles of riverfront property on the Quea located in the foothills, and making an exception based on the project's proximity to the river does not constitute it as unique. The traffic impacts are substantial, with evidence warranting a traffic impact study, especially with the cumulative impacts of Redwood Ranch also taken into account. I respectfully ask that the board recognize the clearly outlined statements and substantive evidence submitted by numerous concerned citizens and our SEQA attorney, Amy Minter. Please correct the inaccurate representations of county zoning and planning documents by RMA. It is in good faith that we ask you to use your administrative powers as our democratically elected representatives, and at the very least, require that a SEQA EIR be done before the project is allowed to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathleen Sligman, followed by Dean Harbold.
Good morning, my name is Kathleen Sligman, and I live at 46136 South Fork Drive. First, I'd like to acknowledge the applicants of this project, who seem like really nice people with good intentions. I think we probably share a lot in common, but unfortunately, the commercial development they propose is cited in an unsafe location with severe impacts to the, to the community. The RMA has created a hostile and divisive situation by ignoring the county's development standards and guideline policies. Had this project been located in an area that was accessible to county, to county fire with roads that are paved and 20 feet wide, and where there is flat enough areas to build outside of that 100-foot setback from our precious and vulnerable river, I would have been supportive. A risk assessment of this project needs to be conducted through an EIR. Project access in emergency evacuation is dismal at best, with a recent timed run conducted by Fire Chief Andy Turner of over 30 minutes in perfect daytime conditions. The project proposal claims that ITE data for resort hotels in rural areas generate 13 trips per room with caretaker units and resident units generating up to 10 trips each, meaning with five proposed teepee structures, four separate cabin units, a caretaker, and full-time resident, the proposed project could generate up to 137 trips on a busy weekend day. If the two vacation rental units are approved, with at least two rooms per unit, an additional 52 trips could be generated totaling 189 trips. With the recently approved Redwood Ranch project just a mile and a half down canyon, and an estimated 202 trips per event, the total cumulative trips now being generated in the South Fork Canyon on a substandard roadway that is less than 12 feet wide is 391 trips. Despite the available data, the RMA is using their own discretion to downplay the impacts on a narrow and dangerous road. How are emergency response vehicles supposed to respond to a fire event with potentially hundreds of cumulative guest ranch, guests panicking and evacuating along South Fork Drive? The fire department has not approved the access in evacuation roadway, and no risk assessment has been performed. I strongly encourage you, the Board of Supervisors, to require a SEQA EIR and full traffic impact study be conducted by an independent engineer before this project can be considered. Thank you so much. My time is up.
Thank you. Next is Dean Harold, followed by Sher, or Harbold, excuse me, followed by Cheryl Harbold.
Well, I know you've all heard about the fires in the road and everything else, and I'm sure you're tired of it by now. So 10 years ago, first of all, I bought my house up there in 1971 and have been going there ever since, living there off and on, permanently off and on. 10 years ago, I built a barn on my property and did everything according to code with all the proper permits and a 5,200-gallon, 5,200, not so I don't compete with the ranch up there. The water tank had to be approved by the fire department before I could, they would sign off on my barn, which they finally did, and I asked the firemen after we did our discussion, how long it took him to get from the fire station up to my house, which is at the end of the paved road, not another mile and a half up the road. He said approximately 30 to 35 minutes. And my response was, well, I guess by the time you got here, my house and my barn would have burned to the ground. And he says, "We would never bring a big fire truck up this road." He says, "It's way too dangerous and number one," he says, "we would bring nothing larger than a Forest Service fire truck." So I'm just, that's just, and this is very, very serious business. I know that you are elected supervisors, and all of you are well-educated, and all I ask is that you give great thought to this property that is trying to, now I have the Redwood Ranch on one side of me, and now if you approve of this, I will have the Sunshine Paradise Ranch on the other side of me, and none of them are there for anything but to make money.
Thank you. Cheryl Harbold, followed by Anthony Ferranti.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Harbold, 49032 South Fork Drive. My husband and I live next door to the Sunshine Paradise Ranch, so I guess you would call us fairly close neighbors. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for all the roadwork that you did yesterday on Upper South Fork Drive. Years ago, the road washed away in a heavy rainstorm. It was repaired, but it was in danger of collapsing again. The road maintenance crew did a beautiful job of repairing the road this time. Now, the heavy cement and lumber trucks that are going to go to the construction site on the South Fork don't have to worry about the road giving away underneath them. I'd also like to thank you for paving the 50 feet of dirt road in front of our house. I don't know how much it cost, but every little bit helps to keep the dust down. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anthony Fernati, followed by Esther Hocker, Hecker, Hecker, apologies.
Good morning.
Good morning. A number of years ago, my wife and I tasked a real estate agent to find us a place in Three Rivers. We had vacationed there many times and really decided that we loved the community there and we wanted to build a life for ourselves there. The special task we set for him is that we really wanted to be far enough away from the highway because we did not want to deal with the highway noise. We wanted a peaceful place to live. When he showed us a place that was over five miles back from the one ninety-eight on South Fork, we knew we had found our home. Earlier today, we heard that this business intends to be a low-impact business. I can tell you from experience with the Redwood Ranch that's been currently operating for over three years that these types of guest ranches are anything but low-impact. The amount of people that these places are going to bring up that road that you've obviously heard lots about creates a lot of traffic and not just on the days that the events are planned, which with regards to Redwood Ranch is almost every weekend, but in the days leading up to those events and the days following those events, we have vendors that are servicing those businesses. That creates quite a lot of traffic beginning earlier in the day and can run sometimes into the early parts of the morning as you're shuttling with the Redwood Ranch, hundreds of guests back out of that event. I really would hope that you guys will consider these kinds of things. I'm not saying that that road is too dangerous, that people can't be driving on it. I'm just saying that when you start to add hundreds and hundreds of more trips on that road, you are just rolling the dice and hoping that people are not going to make a mistake and that mistake could end up being tragic with the nature of that road and realities of that road. So, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Esther, followed by Kenneth Woodrow.
My name is Esther Hacker. I live at four six seven two six, South Fork Drive. I am at about six and a half miles up South Fork Drive as you go towards Sunshine Ranch. My family spent extensive time many years ago looking for a place that was agriculture-zoned, that was a place that we could have cows, small orchard, and be away from the commercial development site. And what we have found is that it's beginning to creep up in the area there. And one of my big concerns is, as you've heard, there is, we live where there's very high fire severity zone, narrow windy roads, steep drop-offs. It takes a long time for people to get in and out. The more people we put in there, the more of a challenge we have dealing with evacuation for a fire. Community evacuation is very important to me, not just how I get my family out, but how do all of us get out on one road going down. The more we put in development with lots of people, then the more we're going to have trouble with that. I know that you've been asked for fairness, to please be fair on this. I ask you also to be fair to those that live there, that we get to continue to enjoy not only the great foothills, but we keep it safe and we are not into developing it so that it's a place that is hazardous to other humans that also want to go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Woodrow, and that will be the last of the forms I have filled out.
Hello, I'm Kenneth Woodrow, travel chair for the Wuxachi Mitchehay. I learned about this development when I was at a national parks meeting. A local person came up to me, being Native American, she wasn't from the area, and she understood that I had a SBA team, AB fifty-two issue out here in Tulare County. So, I went by the development, took a ride down there. Then I went home, looked at my records, site records, and I see there is a development, there is a site out there, several sites. I'm going, why? Why didn't the county notify me? Apparently because it's SEQA exempt. They don't notify the Native American Heritage Commission, who notifies me there are sites in this development. Then I go back, I read about this bridge being developed there. And in that report is confidential information. I've been trying to work with your planners. Oh, we won't divulge anything. I look on the website yesterday, I look at this place, divulges the information. It says confidential information on the paperwork from the Chris system. And he wants me to tell him, are you guys, what's out there? I love to work with the county on these projects. I've been here forever, you know? We signed treaties fifty-one, fifty-six with the county. But it really, when it says confidential information, we have problems. We have problems everywhere in this county, not just this county, other counties also, of our sites being robbed. I just go, now, how can I relate to you besides the cultural site? There's a lot of involvement with SEQA. SEQA was never kicked in. That's when I get notified. That's when I can go out there. Right now, we're working on a SEQA project. We're finding burials, notifying the county, notifying the state, who notifies Native American Heritage Commission, and then we're called out there. I still have to re-bury one of my ancestors from the Boswell project years ago. I was involved in that. JP, you know, dealt with the county on that. We went in there, we worked with Boswell's people, we went out there and monitored everything, everything possible in the site. But never got a call from the county planning commission to deal with any of these items. I had to deal with them personally. Same thing with Edison Power Company, PG&E. I get more respect from outside entities than with the own government process, which is required by SEQA. But this was never brought onto SEQA. So, I would never be notified, fishing game would never be notified, the process stopped. And the only reason I saw it is because I broke down the road, coming down from the national parks, dealing with issues up there, what burials also, high concentration of burials in these areas from the nineteen fifty. I have pictures from friends that were there at this site back in nineteen fifty-nine as the high school students. I have pictures of the site. Why don't, something needs to be done here because just driving down the road, I go, I would never come to this place, a wedding venue or, you know, somewhere to get away to. I mean, why isn't the planning commission talking to us as a tribe, a government relationship? I'm not just an individual, I'm a government, recognized under AB fifty-two to deal with these cultural resource issues. There's a lot of issues out here, not only at county level, federal level, Corps of Engineers. But that's my issue right there. I know they talked about all these areas that need to be improved, which is true. I mean, I would never go up there, only to see my sites, my ancestral sites, because this is within our treaty areas, this is within our reservation that was supposed to be created for my people. It's just heartbreaking to see, nobody wants to talk to us. They don't want to talk to the Wuxachi Indian Tribe. I've been corresponding for projects for years with county planning commission. Oh, it's outside, it's outside SEQA. There's nothing there. I'm on projects where I'm finding all sorts of stuff. Arrowhead's from the other side of the mountain over in Nevada.
Mr. Woodrow, would you wrap up your comments?
Yes, I would like to be more involved in these projects instead of being cut out. I'd like to be notified. I'd like to know how they justified exempt SEQA. That's what I'm asking for because there's a lot of projects out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll ask later. Are there any other public comments wish to speak on this matter? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi. My name is Larry Swimmer and I'm located at four five four nine three A, South Fork. And I moved there almost two years ago when looking for a place to retire in a great community. And I thought I had found one fifteen years ago in Westonoma County, and that's where I just came from. And little by little, as neighbors in my neighborhood either passed away or moved on somewhere else, each house became a short-term rental and not by people that wanted to subsidize their mortgages, by distant landlords who had five, six, ten properties. And my nice little, this eight hundred square foot place next door to me, which had a nice couple living there, I knew for fourteen years, became almost a weekly bachelor and bachelorette party. County allowed eight people in an eight hundred square foot place. Anyway, so to me, there's a whole dead, it really started innocuous, it started small, but it self-perpetuates. One becomes another now. I can't live in my house, so that now becomes a short-term rental because no longer would somebody move in. So, the whole neighborhood has turned over and it's now a party town. And it's actually a fun one, but it isn't where you want to retire. And times have changed a bit when it comes to traditional planning models. This new gig economy that looks to monetize non-traditional monetized assets, everything, has, the traditional planning models have failed. If you look at San Francisco and Los Angeles, the traffic, which, hard to complain about traffic in LA, but it's even worse in San Francisco and LA now because nobody saw Uber and Lyft coming. Planners, urban planners who are very well-educated, postgraduate degrees, who had incredible models, they missed it. They admit they missed it. And I fear the same thing is going to happen here. Every twenty, thirty, forty, fifty people that come, two of them are going to look around and go, hey, this is a nice place. But they're not going to look at it how I looked at it as a beautiful place to retire after, you know, a lot of years of hard work. They're going to look at how they can monetize it. And they're not going to, so they're going to start to do things that we did not think about. And it's going to be hard to tell people no after you've told so many people yes. Anyway, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, do any members of the board have any questions for any member of the public who has commented? Let's go Supervisor Valero first.
All right.
Turn on your mic.
Okay. Yes, well, thank you for that. I wanted to go back to the comment with regards to archaeological and sensitive corridor. And I wanted to bring up statements that were made at the planning commission. And so, just so that way we, I can have it on record, but also to see whether or not these documents have already been provided. So, when asked by Commissioner McElroy of evidence of the significance of this area or evidence or knowledge that there are artifacts or something of cultural significance to our people, Ms. Acosta replied, I do. Unfortunately, it's confidential, but I am willing to share with the board confidentially because I can't say publicly where they're located. No documentation was given to the planning commission or staff. Commissioner McElroy also asked, are you talking about resources on this site that you're wanting to protect? Ms. Acosta responded, yes, the entire area because it's nine point five miles upriver. The entrance to Sequoia National Park is only one point five miles away and there are significant archaeological sites that have been documented within that area. So, my question to the opposing party is, do we have documentation that has been provided to the planning commission to certify this information?
Could you please come forward and to the microphone?
Yes, I responded after finding out about this project to Native American Heritage Commission, asking them why weren't they notified? So, I submitted the documentation to Native American Heritage Commission, letting them know there is sites within this area. They sent a letter back saying we do have these sites on record.
But have those been provided to the planning?
The planning commission, as I stated earlier, released documents that were confidential to the general public. They're not supposed to do that. This is something that you don't do because in this paperwork I have right here, it tells you everything. And this is on another project up the road, but these sites are on the Sunshine. So, they are documenting, the planning commission knew about these documents, but they released it to the general public. I didn't have to release it. I didn't have to notify Native American Heritage Commission. They already released it. They knew about it.
Just for a point of clarification, the sites are at this project or another project?
Adjacent to this project. We don't know exactly because this was done in nineteen fifty-nine. There was no pin dropped. So, it's within the township range of coordinates. Two projects.
Gotcha.
I have pictures of them off the webpage from the county. I mean, I'm standing right here with bear rock borders, possibility of burials in the adjacent area. It hasn't been resurfaced since nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen sixty. So, we don't know what's out there. Went up to the national parks, never figured we would find a burial within these two rocks. We did. And it was burial. It wasn't a death or a homicide. He was buried with all his items, his best place. He was buried between two rocks. You know, I'm telling you something, I'm not telling you the location, but, I mean, that's how we do it. We bury where we lived, you know? This is, this is from your own website, all this information.
Right. So, I think to Supervisor Valero's point, the documents were provided to the planning commission, not possibly from the tribe, but from some other resource.
From the Chris system out of Bakersfield who has to report to you for all the sites.
Okay.
They knew about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board?
I have questions to Mr. Woodrow.
Oh, okay. Mr. Woodrow, yeah. I have another question.
I just wanted to follow, yeah, I had a similar question to Supervisor Valero, but on the sites, in fifty-nine and the Chris system, are there identified burial sites on the four acres?
As Dr. Jay Van Orloff, who I knew personally, who did the area survey, the possibility stated in the paperwork, I wasn't, you know, even born yet.
Possibility on the four acres or possibility within that section township and range?
That section.
Within that section.
Yeah, and it was, you know, the thing is, you know, it's been used for hundreds of years, thousands of years. I mean, if you go up to Kuaia, there's thousands, tens of thousands of burials. I mean, that's the thing is, this is just an offshoot. Of course we live there.
Right.
You know? It's an old site.
And, yeah, I'm just trying to dig down a little bit. Are there any, is there any actual documented either burial site or any other cultural resource site on the four acres?
Well, that would be classified. That would be, yes, there is. That's all I could say because, well, you can go to your own website and see it all.
You know where, but you know where they are?
We don't know exactly where they are, but they're within that project area. Anything within a quarter mile or half mile, we still have to be involved.
Okay.
They just blew us off. That's my whole thing is, when I talk to your lead planner, well, everything's sacred to your people, you know? I go, well, why do you have to say that? This is on another project. So, there's not a good communication between my government and your government planner. So, I mean, I found out, just happened to be sitting next to a person going, oh, you know what's going on over there? I knew about the bridge. You know, I knew about the bridge when I, and then I went in-depth again to read the paperwork and I go, oh, my God, he just released all this information that on it, San Joaquin Valley record search results confidential. It doesn't say general public or open to the public, it's confidential. So, they put the whole thing on there. Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any other questions from board members for any member of the public who Seeing none, and seeing that there are no more public comments, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing and bring back the matter for board for discussion. And do any board members have any questions for staff at this time or comments?
So, on this site, there was, there's been a lot of talk about fire and all of that. So, are fire prevention breaks required? Are, you know, water tanks required, you know, reserve tanks in case of a fire and all of that?
Yes, through the chair, we did respond to all the comments that have ever been asked in regards to fire. And we did limit the times they could have fires on the site to winter, so fire is not a real concern during the summer. And as far as this project, and I do disagree with the attorney when he said, we do not look into this. Public Works and the Fire Department looks at every one of our projects and gives us conditions of approval. So, those conditions I read to you earlier were the conditions required by the Fire Department in regards to, they do look at access and the SRA does have requirements for access and the all-weather and the weights of the, that the road can handle. So, all those things are required. And as stated by the applicant, they are going to build tanks on-site to handle the fire, including also having sprinklers and including also having sprinklers and fire detectors. So those are all that is required by the Fire Department.
Yeah, I have one other question. In looking on the maps, there's a National Park, South Park, South Park, South, that too. You know what I watch, folks? South Fork Campground?
Yeah, Ladybug Trail, yes.
Yeah. Has that, has there been any issues with that as far as traffic and whatnot as folks are saying will happen with Sunshine?
I don't think that anything's really evolved as we've created this record in regards to traffic there.
Do we know how many visitors that campground gets a year?
No, we don't know off the top of our heads how many guests come through that route. It's not as used as, of course, 198, so from what hear say, it's not as used as it used to be. But we have no confirmation of that. We did try to get a comment from the parks and we didn't receive one back, so we don't know.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Supervisor Townsend?
Aaron, on, back to the cultural resources thing, there were, in the 68 conditions of approval, was there anything that if something should be discovered during any grading activities that, that the tribal we notified?
Absolutely, and they are to have a cultural expert on hand, monitoring and inspecting throughout the whole process. The Chris report itself didn't say anything, so that's usually our indicator whether to dive deeper in SEQA. And without any other peripheral knowledge documented, the condition itself as a project feature satisfies staff's curiosity as to whether anything exists or not. There will be a cultural expert on-site, and in fact, he's already been retained. So as they go through the rest of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Didn't want to lose my spot. I was reading the 68 conditions of approval and wanted to refer to a couple of them. You know, you look at, a lot of the conditions really do seem to restrict what this development could be. So I think that those really do, as long as these conditions are adhered to, it really does achieve the de minimis impact that this applicant is originally seeking here. I do agree with your comment to strike Condition 30, eliminating the ability of the applicant to use a short-term vacation rental. I think that makes sense. But one of the things that I think we need to look at too, I know that SEQA requires notification of tribes in sensitive areas. This is exempt under RMA's findings. But I think in the instances where we do have any likelihood of heritage or cultural or Native American artifacts, I think it's better to over-notify than to under-notify. And maybe in the future, we want to make sure that we're giving courtesy notice or courtesy involvement just to make sure that we can avoid any impacts to these culturally sensitive areas. It's just a couple of comments I wanted to make.
And just for the record, they were notified on the bridge, and we didn't get any comments back, so, including the person who spoke earlier.
Thank you. I have a few questions. One, are there any plans for improving South Fork Drive in the future as far as the county's concerned?
I think that was a no nod by the director, so. But we did discuss this project and with the Roads Department in whether they'd be willing to even accept some kind of assessment fee for this project. And they said, no, not really, because that puts a timeframe on it. And they have their system in which they improve roadway. So this might accidentally cause them to have to be fairly inefficient to do anything in this area.
Is, switching gears a little bit, the foothill growth management plan was mentioned quite a bit today. What was the intent of creating that initially when that was adopted by?
Again, as far as, if you look at our general plan, we have three resource areas. We have the FGMP, we have the RVLP, and we have the mountains. And it's a very unique general plan in that regard. The FGMP was created to protect the environments in the foothills, and it did try to funnel the larger-scale developments into those development corridors. Outside of that, as stated, the goal was to, again, keep open space, keep agriculture, protect riparian corridors, et cetera. But I did want to state, the thing about zoning is, and the thing about use permits is that they are conditional use permits. You are bringing that project into compliance with the existing zoning AF. So does the FGMP in spirit say you can't do this? No, it doesn't. It says you, if there are large-scale developments and anybody who was fortunate enough to work on that Yocul project dug into the FGMP pretty deep. And we did. And we understand the difference between what's proposed in a development corridor, commercial development, commercial retail development versus what's proposed as a guest ranch. The guest ranch is more in line with active agriculture as those use permits allow it to be than with a development in a development corridor without upsetting the FGMP.
There was also comments and discussions about individuals, and perhaps, I know there was a lot of discussion about another project, and so that it may have been in reference to the other project that's not before us today. But I do know that we've had this issue in the past as far as people proceeding and building and doing projects without permits. And so are there penalties if individuals aren't necessarily going through the proper channels and procedures for those type of applicants that are trying to come into a compliance? I mean, what do we do from a county if someone tries to do whatever they want and come back and beg for forgiveness?
Well, generally, as far as a practice, we do try to get, we try to work with people, regardless, all over the county. This is not a unique case. We have quite a few applications out there where people are trying to be brought into compliance. Ultimately, if they do not come into compliance, then we escalate the violation process. So as soon as they make an application, we lower the status of that potential violation. So it's really working with people to do what's right as far as the zoning, but also any buildings or anything else like that. So we generally work with people. But ultimately, if they choose to ignore us, we ultimately do go after them.
That's good to know because I, it's important for me to make sure that we're not encouraging bad behavior. And so by making sure that we're, there is some rules in place and there are some, you know, there are some issues or some penalties or something along those lines, some enforcement. If you're just going about and doing whatever, I think that's important because people that have gone through the process the right way shouldn't have to be, you know, what's the encouragement? What's the, what's the fruit, the carrot that's going to continue to have people follow our rules and guidelines?
And for the record, we did increase the monitoring, and we did increase the inspections on these projects. So actually coming into compliance with the use permit gives us many more tools, including ultimately potential for revocation of the use permit if they are not abiding by the conditions. And on this project and others, we've been upping our inspections and our monitoring. So once they come into compliance.
Very good. Any other questions by members of the boards or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, one way or another, if that's the pleasure of the board.
I'm going to move approval as recommended by the planning staff with removing item 30 and retaining the other conditions.
A motion by Supervisor Townsend? A second by Supervisor Shackland. Please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go on to our not timed items, and we'll take up item 73. Request from the Health and Human Services Agency to receive a presentation from the Homebase, the Center for Common Concerns on Pathway Home, responding to homelessness in Tulare County as a proposed countywide strategic plan. And the public hearing for the previous items now close.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board, CEO, and County Council. I'm Chaz Felix, Homeless Initiative's program coordinator for Health and Human Services. I'd like to welcome Nika Rapkin, Executive Director of Homebase, to speak with you on Pathway Home, responding to homelessness in Tulare County as the proposed homeless strategic plan for the county. Homebase is considered a nationally preeminent firm for helping local jurisdictions respond to homelessness. We've been fortunate enough to have worked with Homebase for the Task Force on Homelessness through the middle of this year through a tremendously comprehensive planning process. We've been incredibly impressed with Homebase's commitment to help us develop a plan custom-made for our unique needs and not just a one-size-fits-all cookie-cutter approach. We know homelessness is a complex issue requiring a coordinated response, and Pathway Home represents a unified vision for moving forward. So I will now hand it off to Nika to go into the plan a bit more for your consideration and feedback.
Good afternoon. It's really a pleasure to be with you all today. I'm going to pull up the presentation. Try not to pull up the mustaches. Okay, there we go. My name is Nika Rapkin. I'm from Homebase. We're the consultant that was retained by the Task Force on Homelessness to conduct the strategic planning process for the countywide strategic plan. And I would say on a personal note, it's been a genuine pleasure. It's been a very intensive, very extensive process over the course of the past six months or so. I'll talk a little bit about the process, but it's involved the input and participation of many, many dozens of community members here. And it's genuinely been an honor to work with you all on this process. A little bit about why the strategic plan and why now? One of the reasons why now is that the strategic plan is required for State No Place Like Home funding. At the same time, this is an ideal opportunity to develop a plan that will provide a comprehensive solution over the course of the next five years to meaningfully address the homelessness crisis that Tulare County is facing. And the recognition that to meaningfully address the homelessness crisis is going to require the investment and participation of all stakeholders, city jurisdictions, the county, the nonprofits, service providers, and service organizations, everybody who has a stake in this issue. And so this strategic plan was an opportunity to identify solutions that are specifically tailored for Tulare County and at the same time reflect what we know about the national best practices, what we know about how to ensure that resources are being used as effectively as possible to really move the needle on this very complex issue. The strategic planning process, as I mentioned, took about six months. It involved, first of all, a deep dive into all of the existing background information, a variety of different data sources, past reports, past discussions and inquiries around homelessness, housing, and other related issues that touch on homelessness in the community. And then substantial different approaches to stakeholder input. We were originally supposed to conduct about eight to 10 one-on-one stakeholder interviews. We actually ended up conducting over 40 with stakeholders from elected officials to service providers and housing developers. We conducted two focus groups that included people with lived experience of homelessness as well as direct service providers who are doing the day-to-day work on the ground, a half-day community summit that involved over 75 participants, first responders, elected officials, city staff, dozens of people who have a stake in helping to design and lead the solutions around homelessness in Tulare County. We also facilitated a number of different topical meetings and conducted a community survey process, which we had 650 community members respond to our community-wide survey. So we were able to integrate that as part of the development of the priorities and solutions. And then a number of public presentations and discussions at task force meetings. What we feel that we as Homebase bring to the picture is a national perspective. What's working in communities similar to Tulare County that might be appropriate here? But then we really use the community feedback to make sure that those solutions are being tailored to the particular needs and also the opportunities. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we saw here that sets Tulare County apart and some of the solutions that are, were identified both as the community and also from our perspective as far as the most impactful opportunities for, in the near future, moving, really moving the needle on the homelessness crisis. The strategic plan is in three parts. As you know, it's a comprehensive document. It's quite lengthy. The first part is looking at what homelessness looks like in Tulare County. While the entire state of California is experiencing a homelessness crisis, it does look different from one community to another. And so designing the solutions that are going to most effectively respond to what homelessness looks like here was an important part of ensuring that the plan's going to be effective. The second piece is looking at the system as a whole. What is, what is happening? What do you need more of? What do you need to be doing better? And what's not happening at all that really needs to be happening as a core part of impacting homelessness? And then lastly, in a series of goals. And those goals are a balance of, on the one hand, very flexible because this is intended to apply to all stakeholders, including different jurisdictions in the community, different cities that are in very different places in their homelessness solution implementation processes. So it would create the flexibility for them to really be moving forward as part of the solution. But at the same time, having a very robust and ambitious but achievable agenda and roadmap for the county over the next five years to be, do what actually is going to need to be done in order to address the issue. So I'm going to talk briefly about what the highlights of each of these three parts. First of all, as I believe everybody knows, homelessness is skyrocketing in Tulare County, and this is happening across the state. Here we see a 30% increase in homelessness just since 2015 significantly. One thing that does set Tulare County apart is that there's a particularly high number of people who are living unsheltered and a particularly high number of people who are, have been homeless for a very long time and have been disconnected from the system for a very long time, living near the river and so forth. At the same time that we're seeing this skyrocketing numbers of people who are becoming homeless, we're also seeing a decrease in the number of shelter beds. And that's part of why there's so many people who are living unsheltered. In terms of demographics of who's homeless, many of the people who are experiencing homelessness in the community are the most vulnerable members of the community. There are over 3,000 students who were reported as experiencing homelessness over the course of the 2017-18 school year. The number of adults over age 55 who are experiencing homelessness has doubled since 2015. And this is actually consistent with trends that we're seeing nationally where more and more seniors are aging into, unfortunately, retiring into homelessness. Significant number of women who are unsheltered and women are subject to particular threats of violence and trauma when they're living on the streets. And what this can do is further entrench them in their homelessness and traumatize them in a way that keeps that much further from being able to exit homelessness successfully. There's, as demonstrated by the infographic, the vast majority of veterans, the vast majority of people with disabilities, the vast majority of seniors are all living unsheltered in the community at this time. And the numbers of youth who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness is also increasing. Looking at the county demographics. Looking at the county demographics, a few points of interest. One is that ninety percent of people identified as experiencing homelessness in the community also had their last stable residence in the county. We also see a very large number of the individuals who are homeless also have disabilities and a significant number are chronically homeless, meaning that they've been homeless for an extensive period of time and will require intensive supports in order to successfully exit homelessness and retain housing. And sixty-four percent have no financial resources, including public benefits. And we wanted to call this out because one of the things that we've seen from this process is that there's a lot of relatively low-hanging fruit, a lot of opportunities to be moving forward solutions here. And we've also been looking with an eye towards the fact that resources are limited and therefore need to think comprehensively about where can resources be coming from. And one of the places that resources could be coming from is ensuring that the individuals who are experiencing homelessness are on the kinds of public benefits that they're entitled to. For example, if they're eligible for SSI, then they're on SSI and that can be used to contribute to supportive housing costs, just by way of example. So the fact that there's such a large number of people who are disconnected from public benefits is one example of a potential relatively low-hanging fruit opportunity for bringing resources into the system that aren't necessarily taxpayer dollars but can be crucial to supporting a meaningful number of people in exiting homelessness. We are often asked, why, why is homelessness skyrocketing here and elsewhere? And looking specifically at Tulare County, there are very high rates of poverty and at the same time, rising costs of housing and wages that are not keeping up with the rising costs of housing. And so what that means is that there's a greater and greater number of people in this community that are living paycheck to paycheck and it really doesn't take very much. It's, few missed hours are, of work can be enough for somebody to fall into homelessness. There's any number of reasons why people are becoming homeless here. Really appreciated the language around, there is no silver bullet and that is because homelessness and its causes are so profoundly complex. We do see really high rates of unemployment and evictions and people who are already unstably housed in substandard housing are doubled up, fleeing domestic violence as reasons why people are becoming homeless at high rates here. Then moving on from the demographic analysis and what homelessness looks like into the solution, or excuse me, into what the system looks like. I would say frankly, from a perspective of, where we see a lot of communities across the state, across the country, there's a lot of really excellent work that is being done in Tulare County around homelessness. The, the providers, the continuum of care are doing phenomenal work. They're moving forward best practices. They've increased some of the key interventions that we would have recommended increasing had they not already been on a pathway of doing that. So it's, it's an incredible foundation to start from. You've got a continuum of care that's nearly tripled its federal continuum of care funding since 2012. There's been several initiatives just in the past year from the HOPE team to the LINK Navigation Centers, to the Coordinated Entry that have been really taking forward some key solutions and this has been for us then a meaningful process as far as how do you then build on this system? If you've got so many things that are working right now, it's just that there's not enough of them. What are next steps from, from that perspective? That's, that's always nice to come in and know that you're not necessarily going to need to build from scratch. There are many challenges and the one, a few specifically to call out, one is that we do, as I mentioned, see a lot of opportunities that, some of which are truly low-hanging fruit for realigning resources or coordinating better around resources for more effective solutions. But there is a lack of community-wide consensus around what needs to be done and so a significant amount of work being done in silos, for example, where we're losing opportunities to get the most benefit out of resources. There's a lack of low-barrier shelter options and the people here who, significant people, number of people who are experiencing homelessness who have very intensive service needs and therefore really need robust wraparound support in order to exit homelessness and stay exited. The strategic plan is split into five goals. Moving on to the goals, the third and final section. The first of these goals is increasing access to permanent housing. And by permanent housing, what we mean are housing that's accompanied by supportive services that support people to get through the, the issues that they deal with that are, would cause them to fall back into homelessness, to support them, ensuring that they're staying in that housing for the long term. So those are permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, some of those kinds of interventions. And that's first and foremost because that's, is demonstrated to be the most effective and cost-effective approach to responding to homelessness. The second set of strategies is around increasing access to services to support exits from homelessness and this includes, by way of example, the low-barrier shelter, which is something that's talked about a lot in Tulare County. And what's critical and that this, this plan really seeks to underscore is, it's not just low-barrier shelter, but it's a housing-focused low-barrier shelter, ensuring that those strategies like shelter are connecting people to permanent solutions. So instead of just providing beds for people to get out of the cold, ensuring that it is part of what is actually ending homelessness for this household and reducing your overall burden of homelessness on your community. The third one is expanding services for subpopulations with special needs. That includes, for example, your growing number of seniors who are experiencing homelessness, growing number of youth who are experiencing homelessness, homelessness prevention, because it is always more cost-effective to prevent homelessness rather than dealing with that after somebody's fallen down what becomes a long traumatic spiral. And then lastly, strengthening public engagement, community partners, creating more community-wide communication, but also creating collective impact structure for bringing the community together, all the jurisdictions and stakeholders to move forward with the solutions that are going to be most effective in the short and the long term here for impacting homelessness. There's a few priorities that we've recommended as areas of particular focus for 2020. That includes the permanent supportive housing, intensive services to ensure people in permanent supportive housing retain that housing, landlord engagement, public messaging, and also the collective impact work, and establishing the low-barrier housing-focused shelters. And then a few recommended strategies as far as how Tulare County, specifically the county, might think of next steps and what the county's role might be around this work. And we're doing these presentations yesterday and today with each of the jurisdiction, or with the three largest cities and with the county. And so for each, we have a slide that has recommended strategies specific for that jurisdiction. And so for the county, we recommend endorsing the strategic plan as the shared roadmap for the countywide response to homelessness, partnering with the other jurisdictions to create that collective impact backbone structure that's going to carry forward the solutions, continuing to, a lot of really great work that is already being done around improving alignment and accessibility and coordination of existing resources. We, we had the opportunity to spend quite a lot of time with HHSA staff and we're impressed with the, the way in which staff are thinking about ensuring that people who are experiencing homelessness and have different kinds of service needs would be better able to access those county resources. And then lastly, expanding the partnerships to integrate service provision, things that are already happening like the HOPE team and where we've got county staff that are embedded and supporting other efforts across the community to ensure the integration of services where people who are experiencing homelessness actually are, which is what helps them connect to the system and ultimately exit homelessness. And actually, one that isn't in, on there but that would also recommend for the county is participating in the permanent supportive housing pipeline, which was something one of the committees we facilitated was a committee focused on development of permanent supportive housing and increasing the numbers of permanent supportive housing units available here. And that committee was very dynamic with, it was across with city staff and county staff and housing developers, the housing authority. There were a number of opportunities for really taking forward permanent supportive housing development and one of the ideas they came out with was having a pipeline and they saw a role for all the different stakeholders in participating in that pipeline. So we would also encourage the county to take a leadership role in, in supporting the coordination across the county and taking that forward. Terms of next steps, right now I'd be very grateful for any questions or feedback from you all. And then, as I mentioned, we are presenting in front of the three largest cities last night, Visalia, and then tonight, Porterville and Tulare. And then the Task Force on Homelessness will be reviewing the, the comments and my understanding is that there will be a request for Board of Supervisors approval of the plan early in 2020. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to present the plan to you this afternoon and I'd love to hear any questions or comments.
Questions, comments by members of the board? Advisor Townsend?
Yeah, thanks for the, the presentation and you already answered a couple of questions I had, but do we plan on within the strategic plan putting together, there's, there's sort of some qualitative goals that are, that are in there? Are we thinking about taking a next step and doing some quantifiable goals? How, how many of the eight hundred plus are we thinking about trying to shelter? How we're going to apportion those around the county? Is that part of the discussion so far?
Just want to make sure. I heard the question, I'm hard of hearing.
Okay, sorry.
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Yes. Speaking of, speaking of making it audible.
And I will too.
The, so what are, is there a plan for creating quantifiable goals for basically how much of the various interventions that you need? Is that?
Yeah, sort of, how many do we think are, is reasonable? How many do we think is attainable out of the eight hundred plus that, that we've identified? And then how we would apportion those throughout the county? If that's something we're going to be thinking about in a big-picture way in the, in the strategic plan or will that be sort of a next step down the road that we go into?
It's a little of both. There are some goals that are set out in the strategic plan as far as specific numbers, for example, of permanent supportive housing beds that the community would seek to have as metrics for achievement of strategic plan goals by the end of five years. So there are some specific quantifiable goals in there. One of the intentions behind the plan was for it to be adopted by each of the jurisdictions here, which are in a variety of different places as far as how they're thinking about their local responses to homelessness. And so we wanted to ensure that the plan would be flexible enough to have a year-over-year implementation plan created so the, and also to be flexible enough to deal with the dynamicness of the fact that the, three years from now, you're going to be in a very different place than you are today. So the, our recommendation would be each year to have this collective impact entity develop an annual implementation plan that would be much more granular as far as the, the how, where's the funding going to come from and exactly how many of each thing do we plan on putting into play?
Very good.
Just, I'm sorry, one, one more follow-up to that. As far as the, the funding, once we kind of create this backbone of the organization between the county and all, and all of the, the cities within the county, when we do go after funding for this, are we going to, to create the, the method that works by, in other words, is the county the lead agency, is, is a third-party agency the lead agency? It all funnels through there and then we decide how and where that, those funds would go?
At this point, the task force is going to be taking into consideration specifically what the format should take. There are a couple of different options for how this looks in communities and we've discussed two potential options that might be a good fit here. Either having a staff person who is embedded, for example, in a nonprofit like the Kings Tulare Homeless Alliance or something that looks more like TCAG, which I know has been a successful entity here in taking multi-jurisdiction work forward. So the next step would be for the task force to conclude what specific, or make recommendations about what specific structure would make sense. In any event, we would strongly recommend that there be a dedicated staff person that is funded by all of the jurisdictions so that everybody has a, a meaningful piece of this, this puzzle and ownership over the plan and that would fund the position that would help take forward the, the coordination and the work around the strategic plan implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Valero?
So although I know that most of the homeless population are centered around the bigger communities such as Tulare, Porterville, and Visalia, how does this compare when factoring in incorporated communities versus unincorporated communities? Because I know like a vast majority of the area that I am accountable for are eleven unincorporated communities and I do see some of that prevalent in those areas. Or was that a factor that was too kind of small to, to really surmise here in this report?
And just want to make sure I got the question. So essentially, what does homelessness look like in the incorporated areas and what from this report are the solutions?
Yeah. And then also, do those that are, that are affected by homelessness in unincorporated communities, do they share similar or different experience than those that live in the, the city core?
Yeah. A little bit of both. For, for one thing, I do think you've got some, it is a county's homeless population so you, and I don't mean the county, I mean as a countywide homeless population. So you do have people who are, I think, moving in and out of city lines a fair amount. You do have a lot of folks in the unincorporated areas who are your most longtime homeless, extremely disconnected from the system, population. And so there's, there's a prevalence of people with those experiences and those needs. And so what that means is in the, the report, there are some recommendations that are specifically tailored for intensifying outreach. One of the recommendations is a mobile multidisciplinary team that can be extremely effective in connecting with the people who've been disconnected from the system a long time of deep trauma and not a whole lot of trust for, for the system or desire to engage. It takes a lot of relationship building to bring those people indoors. And so the, the plan has recommendations like that, that are very specifically targeted to ensuring that there are groups of, and the reason why we go multidisciplinary is that people, for example, street medicine is an extraordinary intervention, not just for people who have medical needs, but actually because a lot of people who have experienced homelessness for a long time would engage with a medical professional in a way that they might not engage with a mental health professional or law enforcement or, or somebody else. So having that multidisciplinary team ensures there's grounds for people to be engaging, building relationships and then moved indoors.
Then just one more question, sorry about. So I know that when we look at homelessness for this report, we're looking at like, like the overall approach. The one thing that I was going to ask is, is there going to be also, say, a focus on our homeless youth population in kind of a program or a pilot or a project that will focus on a particular segment of that population?
For homeless youth specifically?
Yes.
Yes. So there's, really pleased to see the launch of the Dream Center and so tracking the, the outcomes impact for the Dream Center is one of the recommendations in the plan because that's, that is a program that's, has the opportunity to have some really meaningful impact. And if that works here, then scaling programs like that, highly recommended. Some of the other approaches, the, youth do have very specific needs and they also tend to fall through the cracks in, in ways that the adult population does not. And a lot of times, they don't feel safe engaging in adult shelters and other kinds of adult programming and they also need different kinds of support. So one, the, the plan has a number of recommendations specifically around youth. One of them is looking at some different kinds of programming that are specifically tailored to youth that also... tailored to youth that also may be, Tulare County may be in a particular good place to implement. An example of that, one of the challenges that the community has around homelessness is the lack of single-bedroom homes, for example, and smaller residences for single adults. But there is an abundance of larger homes, three and four bedroom. And so one of the demonstrated interventions that works really well for youth is a kind of transitional housing programs where, that are co-located in shared housing. So that will be an example of a youth-targeted intervention that is recommended for exploration in the report, that may make a lot of sense, given the kinds of housing inventory and resources that you have available here.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shuckland?
Well, first of all, thank you, Nika, for all your time spent in Tulare County. Couple of questions. Are, in all of your work, are there any low-barrier shelters that are built in unincorporated areas? Or are they mostly in the city centers, the larger cities, with assistance from the counties for services?
That, I don't have an answer for that right now. I don't, I don't know offhand.
So not off the top of your head?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know. I do know that the low-barrier shelter approach is, there's many different ways that communities have gone about designing those and collaborating around the development and implementation of those, and there's one place that, for example, I would imagine there are examples of where there are the low-barrier shelters in unincorporated areas, because a lot of times, smaller communities look to places like fairgrounds and some other kinds of open, available spaces for locating of those, but offhand, I don't know specifically.
Okay. And then last night, when you presented, there was, when you mentioned about affordable housing, somebody challenged that, well, you know, Visalia, Tulare County is the most affordable housing in the state, but if you're making $950 a month on SSI, we're not, you know, that's still not affordable, correct?
Exactly. And also, the bottom line is that costs of housing, including costs of rental housing, are increasing. I believe that sites, it's increasing by nine percent since 2015, and wages are absolutely not keeping up. So there, to the extent there was already a problem, that problem is going to continue becoming worse.
And then the, another thing I heard quite often last night was that this was a cookie-cutter plan. Can you, you know, can you tell this board why you don't believe this is a cookie-cutter plan?
I can, and I appreciate that question. For personal note, we take this work very seriously, and frankly, believe that it's an honor to be invited to come into a community and work with a community, which is, so it's a personal labor of love or a nonprofit. We do this because we want to have impact, and we don't believe that cookie-cutter plans serve communities. So the, all of the recommendations in there, and all of the priorities in there, have come out of the dozens and dozens and dozens of meetings and conversations that we've had with community members. It's, they're designed to build on what is already working here, and the fact that there are some, a lot that's already in place, that in another community, this plan would be all about just getting that foundation in place. There are some recommendations in here that you would see in strategic plans for other communities. One example of that is the recommendation to increase the supportive housing, the permanent supportive housing and rapid housing opportunities. And the reason that you would see that in basically every strategic plan on homelessness is that those are the most effective interventions, and it's proven. It's proven for small communities, for large communities, and so those are best practices that would be recommended in every community. However, the process that the plan articulates for how this community should get to that was entirely designed by the housing development, permanent supportive housing development ad hoc committee that we facilitated over a few sessions, that was represented by everybody, as I mentioned, it's the, one was city staff and housing authority and county staff and housing developers. And that housing pipeline idea and the steps to create that here were very much developed by those individuals locally, and we brought it back to them, and they revised it and refined it. So it's absolutely a local roles. I think the other aspects, two other aspects of the plan, three actually, that were specifically tailored. One is that it really matches up with the homeless population that you have here. As mentioned, you have a significant number of people who are unsheltered, and a significant number of people who have been disengaged from the system for a long time. Having a housing-focused shelters in there is not something that you would see in all of our plans. Additionally, we really, while we had the plan designed to be flexible in terms of its goals, to try to maximize the opportunity for each jurisdiction to buy in and adopt the plan, we also added a deep level of specific recommendations around how to take that forward, what are our best practices. And part of why we did that was that we recognized that resources are scarce and really need to be targeted towards the most efficient interventions here, and so we wanted to support creating a roadmap that would really work well here as far as next steps, and provide some technical assistance, frankly, by way of the plan. So there's a number of things that we did very differently for the countywide plan here that looks very different than how we approach other plans in other communities.
And then I think, whoops. My last comment would be that, and Pete, you might speak to this, because you were part of the formation of the task force, is I don't think that the Task Force on Homelessness was brought together to solve homelessness in Tulare County. I think there were a lot of different things going on, and it's kind of served as an umbrella to find out what other, you know, what our service providers are doing and how we can better. And I think, you know, we were tasked with something, and I think this plan is part of that task. And there are some other groups right now in Tulare County, Visalia Tulare, that are doing, you know, trying to do things. Do you think that those, do they go hand-in-hand, or is that, you know, something the task force can invite them in? What is your suggestion on that?
First, the task force is really a unique entity, and it was really remarkable from our standpoint to come here and already have people across multiple jurisdictions and multiple sectors already be so deeply educated about the issues and the solutions. It saved us a lot of time, and we could jump right to the hard stuff, and that was really phenomenal. The, I think the challenge in terms of next steps is, I cannot say enough times, there is a lot of opportunity here for solutions, and there's a lot of groups already meaningfully moving towards those solutions. But having an infrastructure that can collectively take forward countywide solutions across jurisdictions and across stakeholders is going to be absolutely essential to making, turning into reality those solutions. And it's wonderful to see that there are so many community groups out there, and so many people who are invested in this issue. The challenge of that is ensuring that everybody is aligned over a shared set of priorities. There are not enough resources here to be implementing solutions that are not the most effective way to address homelessness, and there's not enough resources here for, to have a bunch of disparate groups independently creating the wheel. So I think the opportunity to get those people who are really engaged and motivated to, together to bring what they have to bear in the solution, but having the conversations at the same table is crucial. And I think that's also true from one jurisdiction to another, as the jurisdictions here, Porterville, for example, doing really excellent work in moving things forward, and to be communicating across the jurisdictions and ensuring that we're aligning county resources across the jurisdictions in the most effective way, also highly recommended. So what we have in the plan is a strategy that essentially says each jurisdiction should have its own action committee, its own group of the right people who are figuring out at the local, very, very local level, how are we going to take forward the solutions that we've identified for ourselves this year? And then that structure reporting to and communicating at a more county-wide level, all of which was why we recommend a backbone collective impact person or entity to make sure that all of those conversations happen.
I have about 20 more, but go ahead.
Supervisor Randall?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I actually have several questions here, but I know that our assessor's already sleeping in the back of the room, so I figure I'll limit my questions. But wanted to just specifically focus on your slide that talked about system challenges. The very first bullet point, the lack of countywide consensus. And, you know, Amy started talking about this a little bit, and I was a part of the board that created the homeless task force, the Tulare County Homeless Task Force in 2016. That was now several years ago. There, you know, I think it embodies a lot of what the issues are here today. There's no one silver bullet to solving homelessness. This task force was never created with the goal of solving homelessness. This task force was created to serve as an umbrella full of diverse stakeholders that have a stake in the homelessness arena, that can maybe bring an idea from Tulare, or from Porterville, or, you know, we get some from Visalia too. But it's important that everybody has a place to have, sort of serve as a clearinghouse of ideas, solutions, organizations, whether it's a tiny house village in Tulare, or whatever they're trying to do in Porterville. There's a lot of different approaches to resolving or taking steps in the direction of resolving homelessness, and that was what the task force was created to do, from my knowledge and recollection of serving on the board that created it. So I'm very proud that it exists, and I'm glad that you acknowledged the advantage that Tulare County has because of its existence and deep diving into this issue. I think that having us all on board with a centralized backbone with your strategies you've outlined here is important, and I think that the cities that you've presented to are going to embrace the idea as well, because together, we can, you know, maybe the majority of the homeless population is inside of city limits, but we are the service providers at the county. So together, we can work and really make a dent in this homeless crisis that we're all facing here. I know that other jurisdictions do it differently, other counties are different, but we have to have unique approaches to how we do it here in Tulare County, and I think that your effort here and the effort of the task force has been to do just that, so thank you.
Very good. I had a few questions. I'll try and condense some of them. One, one of the points that was made in the presentation in the report was that 64% of homelessness are receiving no public benefits. And so why is that the case? If you could talk about that. And then also, it mentioned that resources are underutilized, so maybe talk about what specifically is underutilized.
Speaking first to public benefits, I do want to acknowledge that, excuse me, the county among, the county and actually the direct service provider nonprofits and other stakeholders do have programs in place where they are connecting people to public benefits. So that is a good start. At the same time, one of the reasons that we're not, that we're seeing a lot of people who are not covered by public benefits is that we have a lot of people who are very disengaged from the system. And so that's part of, when we're thinking about homelessness solutions, we're really thinking about the Mana Continuum, from outreach and the low-barrier housing-focused shelter all the way up to an exit from homelessness. And so going back earlier to the conversation about, for example, the people experiencing homelessness in the unincorporated areas, the first step is even supporting people to be able to engage with the system, to either want to have conversations with people and process through the benefits that they would otherwise be eligible for, or also to create a structure where they can, they can access those kinds of resources. And what I mean by that is that, and this is something that I know that, it's just say, I've really been looking at, is it's very hard for people who are experiencing homelessness, who have oftentimes very, very severe mental health issues and behavioral health issues, to come in for an appointment, and to make an appointment on a given day of the week, to wait in a waiting room for hours. Those are, and so to the extent that those are barriers to accessing resources, like somebody helping them through their public benefits, that prevents them from conducting the process that they would need to get on SSI, for example. The other major barrier specifically around SSI, and this is also reflected in one of the recommendations locally, that seniors have access to medical professionals who can provide disability documentation for SSI, and that is actually equally needed for the chronic homeless population here, and the people who are homeless experiencing disabilities. So making the system more accessible, reaching out to people more, and having more resources to connect with people who are otherwise disengaged from the system, and then also having more support for getting that kind of disability documentation would all be meaningful, is needed in order to impact that number. The, with respect to...
Underutilized resources.
Yes, thank you. To, it's a complex question to answer, but two ways in which that's immediately apparent. One is that there are a number of housing subsidies that it takes a long time to use, and that's one reason why we recommend landlord engagement as a priority for this coming year. Having effective landlord engagement approaches, and there's a variety of different ways that that's done, and in fact, this community is already taking forward one of the key recommendations around that, which is a landlord risk mitigation fund that just recently launched a few months ago, that will help use those housing subsidies more quickly, and the quicker you use them, the quicker you're getting people out of homelessness, which is overall cost-effective to the community. Another example for how resources could be used more effectively, there are, again, when we look at the big picture, we understand that there's resource scarcity. So part of the question is, well, how could you use existing resources more effectively? And as part of that is, how do you use resources that are not necessarily homeless dedicated resources, but could meaningfully be used for people experiencing homelessness? How can you, if homelessness is a priority in this community, and a priority for the residents of Tulare County, how do you focus those resources specifically on homelessness, and specifically on the things that are most meaningfully going to impact homelessness? So taking inventory of those resources and aligning them to be specifically targeting homelessness is a really key piece of the puzzle and a real opportunity that the county has for moving forward with solutions.
How are the causes of homelessness determined? How do we, I know there's been, there's a lot of statistics in the report as far as, you know, what the causes are. What, how do we determine that?
Start with, we've, as part of our work, there's been communities that have engaged us to conduct cost studies on homelessness, and also there's a number of cost studies that have been done that are federally recognized. The first actually came out of Silicon Valley back in the day. They started this process of actually trying to figure out, well, how expensive is homelessness to a community? And what they were looking at is quantifying, you, especially your homeless population who have been homeless for an extensive period of time, have very intensive service needs, are often also your highest utilizers of public services. So they may be cycling in and out of your jails, your emergency rooms, a lot of first responder costs that are associated with that population.
Outside of costs, what, so how do we, how do we figure out how someone became homeless?
Oh, causes.
Yeah, the cause to...
Sorry about that.
Yeah, not costs, sorry.
I promised a hearing impairment, and I delivered. Causes of homelessness. The way that we, specifically in that slide, it's self-reported through the point-in-time count, and it's pretty consistent with what we are seeing when people do report out on causes of homelessness across the state. One piece of data that I actually forgot to mention, that I, point-in-time counts are imperfect, they're the best thing we have for understanding homelessness and... in a given community, comparing communities against each other nationally, and also, most importantly, comparing communities to themselves over time. And so one thing that we see is, in 2015, you have 1 in 6 people identifying housing-related reasons for their homelessness. Now, in 2019, you had 1 in 4. So the number of people who are identifying housing-related reasons for homelessness, using the same processes for the survey, has significantly increased just from 2015 to now. And so that, that tells us something right there.
Shifting gears again, what, there was a point that I think was very good in the report. There's lots of great points in the, in the report, and it talks about focusing on solutions rather than treating symptoms. And so along those lines, are there root causes to some of the reasons, like unemployment or, and evictions? Is homelessness a symptom, or is it a problem? Or, you know, is it, I mean, those are some of the trains of thoughts as far as regarding that. So I, just, and, and where I'm coming from is I want to make sure that we're focusing on something that is transformational, because I do agree completely with that statement on making sure that we're treating, or we're focusing on solutions rather than treating a symptom.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, that question. I could talk about root causes of homelessness all day long. And it is a really challenging thing that we're balancing when, on the one hand, there's a lot of reasons why people are falling into homelessness that are deep economic and housing development and issues that are, go to the very fabric of a community. And at the other hand, you have a crisis where you've got people who are living on the street, and for everybody who's falling into homelessness, it immediately sets off these triggers of trauma that then keep them homeless. So if you don't respond to homelessness specifically as homelessness, then the consequence is that it's a growing and increasingly expensive problem over time. In the report, one of the strategies is focused around homelessness prevention, and the intention there is targeting towards, there's an evidence base that shows that a lot of people actually don't have to become homeless if you could only intervene in time. Looking at the number of evictions that are causes for people becoming homelessness in Tulare County, what we know about evictions is that a lot of times they're caused by one-time crises in people's lives, as I was mentioning before, the one missed paycheck. And so if you can prevent that one episode of, that one eviction, then that actually oftentimes is a household that never ends up becoming homeless. And so there's a number of recommendations in the plan that are focused specifically to, how do you reduce the inflows? Because that is the most cost-effective approach for those people who otherwise wouldn't need to become homeless. And there's some work already being done in the community around that, but it very much needs to be scaled. It's very, it's very young in its development right now.
And lastly, I noticed that in the report, in the presentation, there's a couple of statistics. One that stated 71% of our population's unsheltered, as well as 71% has some type of mental health slash substance abuse issue. And I'm wondering if those two are correlate, or if that's just a coincidence?
The, they very likely are. It's, going back to the slide a little bit earlier about the, the number, who is unsheltered in the community? It is a lot. For example, 83% of veterans are unsheltered, and a lot of the veterans who are homeless, we know are homeless because of mental illness, PTSD, substance use disorders, just by way of example. So there's a, not completely sure about exactly the correlation, because the question is, who's accessing the shelters right now? And not completely, I don't have that data in front of me, but there's definitely an absolute truth that the majority of people who are experiencing those kinds of vulnerabilities are on the streets here. And then again, because you have so many people who are long-term homeless, who definitely tend to have quite high rates of mental illness and some of those, those other issues, the majority of those individuals are going to have disabilities, and the majority of those individuals are going to be unsheltered because they haven't engaged with the system for a long time.
Any other questions by members of the board or public? Is there any public comments?
Hi, good morning again. Chaz Felix, Health and Human Services. Thank you for taking the time to learn more about the homeless plan, and thank you to NICA and Homebase for doing such a comprehensive job on the planning process with us. One thing I planned, one thing I think the plan did really well is to list out some of our recent accomplishments in addressing homelessness in Tulare County. Homelessness is tremendously challenging, as you all know, so I think sometimes folks get caught up focusing on the negative, but there really is a lot of inspiring work being done out there by extraordinarily passionate people, including those that work for the county. So if you don't mind, I'd like to share some of the things the county has accomplished in the field of homelessness over the last year or so.
That'd be great.
Sure. Starting with coordination of services to St. Paul's Low Barrier Warming Center. Last year, we provided outreach or program services 36 times over the course of center operation, including public health nurses, public guardian, adult protective services, and mental health crisis workers. And we're working currently to coordinate a services plan this time around, should the center be approved.
Chaz, could you speak into the microphone a little, get a little closer? Thank you. That'd be great.
Recently, we formed a new agency-wide ad hoc committee, the Multidisciplinary Homeless Outreach Team, or M-HOT as we call it, to go and connect the unsheltered homeless directly with their services and programs. As you're aware, we supported the development of permanent supportive housing by securing our No Place Like Home allocation earlier this year, that will be partnered with Self-Health Enterprises to provide supportive housing in Dinuba. In terms of program-specific work, we have provided nearly $380,000 of housing and rental assistance to 942 families through CalWorks Housing Support Program and Homeless Assistant Program. We have placed 13 disabled individuals experiencing homelessness into housing through the Housing and Disability Advocacy Program. In the current fiscal year alone, we have provided 123 former foster youth with AB-12 funding for housing and rental assistance. We currently provide 159 beds of supportive housing through a variety of programs through the mental health branch intended to meet the varied needs of consumers in Tulare County. We provide homeless outreach and connection to services through the PATH contract through Kingsview, Kingsview Corporation, which has ultimately connected 30 individuals to permanent housing. As you, as you all know, we assigned a social worker to a ride-along pilot with the Visalia Hope Team. Through this pilot, we made 155 contacts, ultimately leading to 18 individuals being housed. Lastly, we are always actively looking to coordinate our services to existing community efforts, including the King's Tulare Homeless Alliance's pop-up navigation center, or LINK as they call it, Project Homeless Connect every year, and River Details with Tulare, with the Tulare County Sheriff's Office. We know that we are just one piece of the puzzle for addressing homelessness, but rest assured, we actively seek new avenues to address homelessness. On behalf of Health and Human Services, thank you for your continued commitment and support of local homeless efforts, and another thank you to Supervisor Shucklian for leading the task force through a planning process that has really resulted in a final project, a final product that I think will benefit the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
One last comment, and then I'll make the motion, is I want to thank my colleagues for asking good questions today and taking the, you know, advantage of NICA being here and answering these questions, because last night the plan just got a lot of criticism, and I just don't think that was very healthy, and so I'm looking forward to moving on. And I may, I move to...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, there's no motion. It's not, it's just a present.
Is there, is there a public comment?
Yes, sorry. My name's Jenny Byers. I'm with the City of Porterville. Nico will be coming and presenting tonight. We're very proud of the work that we're doing in Porterville as well. We're opening a navigation center this spring, hoping to house 15 emergency shelter beds, 15 transitional beds. We're also working with Up Development and Self-Health for some permanent supportive housing. And so it's nice, because Porterville has a tendency to be off on its own, do its own thing. District 5 Representative Dennis Townsend knows that to be true. And so we appreciate the coordinated effort and the work that you guys have done with Homeless Task Force.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I just, what's that? No action, direction? Beautiful. I just want to thank Supervisor Shucklian for taking a lead on this issue. I, I know that when I, before I got on the board, homelessness wasn't a major issue, but it definitely is now, and so your efforts, I just thank you for representing the county on all these issues and providing information and, and support, and I, the report is very good, so I didn't mention that, but I thought it was excellent, and it's a good first step in trying to identify other low-hanging fruits and options we can go forward with. And we'll look forward to seeing a formal proposal in a few months. We're going to take up item 74, because I'm hoping that's going to be fairly quick. So let's take up item 74. And then we'll take 75 real quick as well.
Hi, good morning again. Chaz Felix, Health and Human Services. I'd like to just give a few comments on this agenda item for you. As it relates to the plan, in addition to providing a unified vision for addressing homelessness, a homeless strategic plan unlocks a number of new funding sources that we could seek. One of these sources being the No Place Like Home program from the state, which is the subject of this agenda item. This item, this program provides capital funding to develop supportive housing for consumers experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Recognizing the need for more supportive housing in the county and as identified by the homeless plan we just heard, HHSA wanted to make it a priority to pursue this opportunity and to come up with a project we feel would be tremendously beneficial for the community. This 80-unit project located in the city of Porterville provides housing for a number of different populations, including 14 units set aside for HHSA consumers experiencing homelessness. We are prioritizing providing services to HHSA clients at the site and have developed a robust service plan to make sure that folks are getting the services they need. We chose to work with Upholdings LLC because of their proven track record of developing successful supportive housing projects throughout the country. We were tremendously impressed with their portfolio and their willingness to partner with other local stakeholders. Upholdings will be working with Self-Health Enterprises to implement this project. And today, we had Betsy McGovern-Garcia here to answer this program.
She's still there.
Thank you, Betsy.
She's a trooper.
I wasn't sure. Yeah, and she's here to answer any specific development-type real estate questions y'all might have. So while there's no guarantee our application for No Place Like Home will be successful this round, we'd just like to emphasize that addressing homelessness will be a top priority at HHSA moving forward. We continue to identify and pursue similar opportunities, and under the board's guidance, we will continue to do our part to address homelessness and serve the residents of Tulare County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Members of the public? Action item?
Well, I would move approval, but I would also like to mention that Upholdings, I think it was a different, they gave a presentation early on of the task force about the work that they were doing, so it made a lot of people aware of what was out there. So, thank you, Chaz, and I would move approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Shucklian, a second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your vote. The motion is approved unanimously, 5-0. All right. We have need for closed session for item R before we take up item 75.
Yes, we'll take up item R, and I do anticipate an announcement out.
So we're going to go into closed session briefly and then come out, and then after that, we're going to, we're going to take up the, after the announcement, we'll take up the remainder of the closed session. So we'll take up item 75 and then break.
The closed session?
What's that?
The remainder of the closed session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll break for item R.
R.
Or go into closed session, not breaking. Services, there we go. Let me state it again. Daniel, I'm just reading the script, so, good thing that was, the mic wasn't on. That's a little loud. The Board of Supervisors took action in a personnel matter to hire Daniel Richardson in the position of General Services Agency Director, effective January 5, 2020. We had a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, a second by Supervisor Shucklian, and the vote count was 5-0 in approval in the eyes. So with that, we're, we're very proud. Daniel is here with us today. He's joining Tulare County from Tuolumne County, where he served as General Services Agency Director, a native of California. Richardson has 25 years of experience in local government, having worked in the Tuolumne County Administrative Office for over 20 years as an administrative analyst and deputy county administrator. Daniel has served in many capacities, working in local government, including the city manager's office for the city of Olaf, I'm not real sure how to pronounce that one, in Kansas, preparing budgets, performance measurements, and creating the city's first website. At Tuolumne County, Daniel held a variety of positions in the county administrative office, where he served as a liaison for almost all county departments, a budget analyst, creation of a capital improvement plan, and was appointed as the county's first General Services Agency Director. He holds a master's degree in public administration with the emphasis on local government from the University of Kansas, and a bachelor of arts degree in international relations from Brigham Young University. Daniel shared he is excited to serve the citizens of Tulare County, looks forward to moving to the community with his family. He and his wife Kathleen have six children. Welcome, Daniel. And before we vote on your, and take up item 75, on your salary, if you want to say a few words, and then maybe we can adjust that if necessary.
Great, thank you. Daniel Richardson, I guess I'm now your General Services Director. I am excited for this opportunity to, to serve the citizens of Tulare County. I know I'm filling big shoes. John Hess has obviously done a good job moving up to the Assistant County Administrator. So what do I bring to the table? I bring a wealth of experience, 24 years of working in local government. This is my career. I love it. I've spent 10 years overseeing the departments that are contained in this General Services Agency, but in Tuolumne County. So I understand that the challenges that come with, I'm serving not just, you know, the board. I'm serving every county department. I'm serving the citizens. I'm helping the county administrator prepare the budget through the internal service funds that I oversee. I'm a credentialed manager with the International City County Managers Association. I'm dedicated to, to public service. I also want to acknowledge that I don't do this work alone. This is work that I do with, with my staff, and I'm grateful for them. I look forward to getting to know them, my coworkers. Thanks for your trust, and I'll do my best.
Thank you.
I just want to assure people that not every, you know, one day you will retire. It's not that we need a tall, balding GSA director in the future. It just was kind of coincidence, so.
Look-alike contest.
Excellent. All right. We'll now take up item 75. Request from Human Resources Department to set the annual salary for the position of General Services Agency Director.
Good afternoon. Rhonda Schustrom, HR Director. The item before you is to set the annual salary for the position of General Services Agency Director. That will be in Bargaining Unit 10 in the amount of $135,000. The same standard benefits provided to Bargaining Unit 10 employees, and benefit of auto allowance at $586 monthly. That's the current amount, subject to change. That's the current amount, subject to change come January 1. And this would be effective as of January 5th, 2020.
Excellent. Any questions, comments by members of the board? Members of the public? I think none, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Supervisor Shucklian. Second by Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your votes. And the vote is unanimous, 5-0. We will now go into closed session. Madam Counselor, we have a need for closed session?
Yes, we do have need for closed session. Items A, B, F, G, N, I, R, and H are off calendar. We'll take up the balance of the closed session agenda through item S.
Excellent. We will reconvene for the balance of the not timed items at 2:30. Well, it's at 2:30, I don't think, you're optimistic, I'm not. All right. Meetings in recess. All right, we will call the meeting back to order at 2:34. Madam Counselor, do we have any announcements? Closed?
No, there's no announcements out from closed.
Very good. We did not complete closed, so we'll have to go.
Yeah, we did not complete closed.
So now we'll take up item 76. Proposal for opening for 167-567 Avenue, 168 Woodville Cecil's Carcel. We're going to declare sealed bids. Laura?
Good afternoon. Mr. Chair, board members, Mr. Britt, Ms. Flores. Laura Silva, General Services Manager for Property Management. This matter is to consider sealed bid proposals and oral bids for the sale of the real property at 167-567 Avenue, 168 in Woodville, commonly known as the Woodville Fire Station. This property was determined to be surplus to the county's needs and therefore it was recommended that it be sold at a cash price of no less than $95,000. On October 22nd, 2019 pursuant to Government Code 25526, your board declared its intent to sell this real property and a notice of intent was published pursuant to Government Code 6063. Notice of sales letters were mailed to local and state governmental entities pursuant to Government Code 54222. Sealed bid proposals were due yesterday by 5:00 PM and no bids were, sealed bids were received. Bidders will have the opportunity this afternoon to provide oral bids with an opening bid of $95,000. To bring to your attention that on November 19th of 2019, the Woodville Union School District noticed the county of its interest in this property for the development of a community library and learning center. So before accepting any bids from the public pursuant to Government Code 54223, the county is required to enter into good faith negotiations with the district for a period of no less than 90 days to determine if a mutually satisfactory sales price can be agreed upon. Should no sales price be agreed upon between the county and the district, staff will review any bids received today and begin negotiations with the highest bidder. Staff plans to return within 120 days or approximately by April 15th, 2020 with either recommendation to accept the successful bidder or reject all bids. And with that, I will hand it back to the chairman to call for oral bids.
Very good. At this time, we now invite any interested members of the public to make oral bids on the property in question. The opening oral bid amount is $95,000 and oral bids thereafter must simply exceed the last oral bid. If any interested member of the public would come forward, identify yourself and make your bid now. Not all at once. Woodville Prime Property. Beautiful District 1, okay.
I guess the fire station's not reopening then, huh?
Doesn't seem like it. There's a fire sale. All right, so no, we didn't receive any oral bids, so staff, I know you have to work with the school district.
Yes.
So do we need a motion on that? You're going to direct?
I think we are good to move forward in those negotiations and then we'll come back with you with recommendation.
Great. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members or members of the public? Have fun. All right, we'll go to item 77. Request from General Services Agency to consider staff recommendations for successful bidders, real property described at 2.26 acres northeast area of Tulare Acres Professional Building.
Laura Silva, General Services, again. This matter is to consider the staff recommendations for the top qualified bidder for the sale of 2.26 acre portion of the real property located at the northeast corner of the Tulare Acres Professional Center parking lot. On October 8th, 2019 pursuant to Government Code 25526, your board declared its intent to sell this real property and a notice of intent was published pursuant to Government Code 6063 and sealed written bids were accepted by the clerk of the board before 5:00 PM on November 18th. On November 19th pursuant to Government Code 25530, the board opened, examined, and declared the only sealed bid from Paloma Development Company for a purchase price of $1,235,000. Pursuant to Government Code 25531, the board called for oral bids of which the initial bid exceeded the written bid by 5% of the highest written proposal. An oral bid was submitted by Caddis Properties in the amount of $1,296,750 followed by multiple competing oral bids by Paloma and Caddis. The final and highest bid was for $1,450,000 and was received from Paloma. Upon review and discussion of the proposed oral bid, it was, it is the recommendation to the board that the, I'm sorry, it was recommended that the board direct staff to begin contract negotiations with Paloma Development with, who is the highest legitimate bidder and return a contract for approval. It is anticipated that we would return with that contract within 45 days. And with that, I will hand it back to the board's consideration.
Very good. Questions from board members? Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Mr. Chair, the question I had is 45 days, the fastest that we're allowed to move forward under the government code, is there?
No, we hope to probably, their desire is to do it sooner.
Yeah.
And 30, yeah, there's nothing, that's just if, if, it would be no longer than that. It's our hope.
Okay, I mean, I would like to move forward at the soonest possible time.
Their desire is the same, so we are prepared to get that going for them as soon as possible.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there questions from board members? Comments? Members of the public? I think none. This is an action item. He didn't. We have a motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, a second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please cast your votes. And the motion approved 5-0. Thank you. Now we'll take up item 78. Request from General Services to approve a design alteration lease agreement with Center Drive Partners LP for premises located at 3247 West Noble in Visalia for a term of 25 years, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Flores, Brooke Sisk, General Services Agency Assistant Director. And I'm here this afternoon to present an agreement for the design alteration and lease of the former Kmart building with Center Drive Partners for probation and Health and Human Services Agency. So during this presentation, I will first provide some background information on the project, give an overview of the proposed agreement terms, then I will introduce Chief Probation Officer Michelle Bonwell and Health and Human Services Agency Director Tim Lutz, who will discuss the programmatic impacts to their departments. Then I will introduce the development team, who will highlight some key aspects of the project, and I will conclude with our requested action. So the catalyst for this project was the sale of the historic Courthouse Square, which included the vacant four-story former courthouse in downtown Visalia, as well as the adjoining building occupied by probation adult services on Center Street. The developer agreed to lease back the building to the county for two years to give us time to find a new location for probation. This lease will be expiring in August 2020 with no option to renew as construction to convert the four-story into a boutique hotel is nearly complete and the developer plans to begin Phase 2 of construction, which includes the building occupied by probation. As GSA and probation began discussions regarding the need to relocate from the Center Street location, it quickly became apparent that as a whole, probation had outgrown their existing office space in Visalia with a combined square footage of 25,549. The department indicated they needed between 50,000 and 60,000 square feet to accommodate their current needs as well as growth tenures into the future. Over the last two years, we explored a variety of options in depth to either temporarily address probation's immediate space needs or more comprehensively solve their needs now and into the future. We considered consolidating all of their programs into a single facility, which was the department's preference, as well as continuing to have their programs split up into multiple locations. One option was to purchase an existing building. Some of the reasons this option did not materialize are, there wasn't anything on the market that suited probation's needs in terms of size, location, or price. Also, the department did not have enough funding immediately available to both purchase and renovate a building, and because the department is primarily subvented through state and federal funding, making up the difference through the general fund is not advisable under current property management guidelines for the county. Another option we considered was construction of a new building on county-owned property. And like the purchase option, the department was not able to fully fund a newly constructed building to meet their needs. And it's significantly more expensive, as much as $350 a square foot, to construct and furnish a new building as opposed to approximately $150 a square foot to purchase, renovate, and furnish an existing building. We also explored a number of properties, a significant number of properties available to lease, none of which were big enough to allow for the fully consolidated option. Therefore, we were primarily only looking for facilities that would solely accommodate the staff on Center Street. Some of the drawbacks included location, which is important to probation for client accessibility. None were move-in ready and would require improvements before the county could occupy the space, which would take time and money, and most would only provide a temporary solution, which could potentially require the department to move more than once and cost more in the long run. More recently, HHSA identified they had a need for additional space in Visalia for mental health services and were interested in co-locating with probation. This increased the total square footage needs. Therefore, the proposed option before you today is to design, alter, and lease the former Visalia Kmart building with Center Drive Partners. The building has 85,500 square feet of office space, 52,200 would be for probation, and about 33,300 would be for HHSA, and that would be moving, them moving in to 12,426 square feet in 2020 and the remaining 20,874 square feet in 2026. It has a 25-year initial term with three five-year options for renewal, an option to purchase after five years at floor fair market value, and will be ready to occupy by August 2020. The base rent is $1.65 per square foot or $106,632.90 per month with a 2% annual increase. And it also includes a common area maintenance fee of 20 cents per square foot or $12,925.20 per month with a 2% annual increase. And that will be reconciled with actual expenditures annually, and the county will be reimbursed for any overpayments minus 5 cents per square foot that will go into an operating expense reserve for major expenses that might come up. It also includes a $718,200 replacement reserve that is funded by the landlord, and that will be for tenant improvements in the future. And we're estimating that furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the building will be about $1.8 million, and that will be funded by the county. So now I'd like to introduce Chief Probation Officer Michelle Bonwell, who will discuss how the project will benefit her clients and the financial impact to her department.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board, CAO, and Council. Thank you for your time today and for, excuse me, allowing me to present our need to consolidate offices in the Visalia area. 70% or approximately 5,000 clients under our supervision reside in the northern part of the county. Therefore, a larger space is necessary to not only service population but to house staff responsible for their care. This location will provide enough space to adequately serve clients under our supervision and is ideal in size, location, and access to public transportation. The department has outgrown our current office space at the Center Fairway and Courthouse locations, which resulted in staff serving clients in overly occupied spaces with little to no privacy. The department's vision is to change lives and build safer communities. To accomplish this, we intend to rehabilitate our clients with evidence-informed strategies to change behavior, hold our clients accountable through effective community supervision, and implement a well-resourced probation system that can effectively accomplish state and local mandates. The consolidation of offices supports our vision as it will provide increased oversight, allowing us to better identify strengths, opportunities for growth, and develop comprehensive plans to improve outcomes. Excuse me. This consolidation in site location is also unique as it will allow the department to better serve clients who require services and supervision across systems through enhanced collaboration with Health and Human Services Agency. We serve many of the same clients and have partnered on various projects, but co-location and improved access to client services will take us to the next step toward a better model of care. I have worked with county staff for approximately two years to assess viable options to address our space needs and feel this is the most appropriate long-term solution to meet the department's current and future growth needs. The cost of a lease will be partially paid for by state funding and the remaining will be paid by our current county allocation and will not incur any additional cost to the county. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce HHSA Director Tim Lutz, who will discuss how this project will benefit the mental health consumers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Board. We're excited to be looking at this and moving forward for this type of an opportunity. What this really represents for us is probably a model for our future service delivery, most specifically relating to our whole-person care, our multidisciplinary teams, and our collaborative partnerships with our other community partners and county departments, in this case probation. As the board heard earlier today regarding the strength and use of multidisciplinary teams to try and address homelessness, that's been one of the key areas that we're looking at for this building in addition to other expansions that the agency's undertaking over the next few years. What we would be identifying here initially on that first 12,000 square feet is to house about 46 staff from, that would comprise our multidisciplinary teams, that would also be addressing the whole-person care pilot project, our AB 1810, which is our criminal justice diversion programs, and future collaborative initiatives that would be engaging the multidisciplinary team. When we get to the future point, the 20,800 square feet roughly, what we'd be looking at there is to consolidate some of our fragmented office locations across Visalia into a more unified central spot, again, trying to minimize the movement for any residents that are accessing our services or receiving treatment, and then creating better efficiencies by having those programs co-located. The ultimate goal then would be a cost savings on that side as we consolidate those other leases, or at worst, a smaller increase for more unified, better space. The cost for this would be borne out of agencies, federal and state allocations, as we're a subvented program, and we hadn't allocated or assumed any general fund to be used toward these payments.
And next, I'd like to introduce Center Drive Partners Sunny Basra and Jim Sanders, who will highlight some of the key components of the project.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Actually, I was thinking about saying good morning when I was thinking about this, but... I'm Jim Sanders, Sunny Basra. We're here on behalf of Center Drive Partners. You know, when I was in business school, my professor always said, "Find a need and fill it." And I think Chief Bonwell and Director Lutz have done a fantastic job of telling you what their needs are. From my background, which is retail development, this is a very hard building to fill, and I think the county does a great service to the community to find a need and filling it by filling this building with fantastic services that the county needs to provide to the public. Want to thank the staff for all the great work that they've done in space planning and negotiations and so forth, and we're here for any questions you may have, and we appreciate your approval today.
I apologize, I forgot to go to their slide, which shows an aerial view of the site and its proximity to this building and the courthouse. That concludes our presentation, and the requested actions before you today are to approve the design alteration and lease agreement for the premises at 3247 West Noble in Visalia for a term of 25 years with three five-year options for renewal, and an annual rental amount of $1,434,697.20 for the first year with a 2% annual increase. Authorize the chairman to sign the agreement, and authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of lease subject to review and approval as to form by county council. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Supervisor Shuckland?
Yeah, how much are we already paying in lease for the buildings that are existing or the existing uses?
Give me just a second.
And while you're looking that up, the HHSA, that's a new program, correct? So there's no existing, they're not using any existing space right now, so we would have to be finding a space for them anyway, correct?
Correct. So the amount of the increase for probation is primarily due to the increased square footage. Here, I'm having a hard time finding the...
Because it'll be more square footage than they currently have in the three locations.
Correct. So it's in the financial section of the agenda item.
Right.
And it is $1,108,191 more than what they're currently paying for the two spaces at Fairway and Center Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that Chief Bonwell commented a little bit on the growth of her department and meeting their needs for over the next 10 years. You know, I think that if we look at what the state is doing and how criminal justice is morphing into the future, we're looking more recovery and rehabilitation-type services. And so I know that you have said this should meet your needs over the next 10 years up to about 60,000 square feet, and I think that having the room to grow is a very important piece of this property. I know that HHSA is a partner, and bringing the money to the table is going to be very helpful as well, but I want to thank the developers for working with the county and coming to this negotiation and putting forward a proposal that I think is a pretty fair proposal to the county, given the amount of space and the renovations that are going to be taking place at the facility. And while, you know, that may have taken some issue with process up to this point, I think that this is a good deal to the county, and I'm supportive of what you have presented us.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chair. Very good. Supervisor Valero?
All right. So I'll just share that at first I was very hesitant to move forward on this with some reservation. However, after much thoughtful consideration, the need for consolidated efforts, and the ever-growing push from the state to consider rehabilitation as opposed to incarceration, the opportunity is now. Prison overcrowding and research findings show probation works better and more cost-effective than incarceration at rehabilitating low-risk felons, and so the need, again, is now. Due to capacity levels for such department, the time to act is now, and because of a growing number of programs and trends impacting the department, and that of which I learned at our CSAT conference as well with the juvenile justice system, and as Supervisor Vanderpoel has just mentioned now, we really need to think strategically and innovatively about the use of such space and the future needs in this area of county concern. And with that, again, I want to thank all those involved, and I look forward to seeing the vision transpire.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of that and just thank Chief Bonwell for bringing the needs, your needs, to us for our attention, and for GSA and HHSA, Center Drive Partners, and all the staff for working so hard back and forth to kind of give us what we need, look at every angle that we could on this so that we could come to a conclusion where it looks like it's going to help for probation for sure, and then we'll be excited to see some pilot programs with HHSA that are also an outcome of having this facility. Thank you.
Supervisor Valero?
Yes, just a quick question for our chief. Does this include juvenile services in addition to the adult services, day reporting, and other services in the same building?
It does. Everything in the northern part of the county will be out of this site.
Okay.
So it will serve both juvenile and adult populations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Entertained a motion?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Supervisor Shuckland?
Second.
Second.
Oh. Go ahead, give it to him.
Too late by Supervisor Valero.
Okay.
Please cast your votes.
Yep.
And the motion approves unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to Item 79, request from the Sheriff's Office to approve an equipment lease purchase agreement, a CAD and records system and services agreement, and shared agency agreement with Motorola Solutions to purchase computer-aided dispatch and records management system equipment, software to facilitate communications, information sharing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Good afternoon. So what have you guys been doing? Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board, Mr. Britt, Ms. Flores, just wanted to update you from our November 19 meeting. You asked the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, to bring back some information on the CAD. Sheriff Boudreau had a previous engagement that he had to make at about 2:00, so UnderSheriff Sigley and I will do this. I'll be brief, and then I'll introduce Tom here. The vision to co-locate the sheriff and the Fire Department, again, just reiterate on that, interoperability, big issue was September 11, 2001. And as we move forward from that, having the technology, a couple of aged systems, the sheriff's system is 1985, ours is 2007, and as we do this in one fell swoop to relocate dispatch, it's so important, especially with these joint projects with Swift Water Rescue, hazmat, and some of our wildland fire applications with large-scale evacuations, more hazmat ventures. So just moving us into that next era and trying to do it efficiently and as cost-effective as possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thanks, Chief. I would say good morning, good afternoon, Chair, Board, which is CAO, Council. Tom Sigley representing Sheriff Boudreau, who really wanted to be here, but again, as the chief said, he had an engagement at 2:00 he could not change, but he wanted me to stress the importance of how important this program is to switch over to for us. As you know, we gave you a lengthy presentation in the November meeting with the break that you allowed us to have today. I was able to cut ours down today to about an hour and a half, so, no, I'm just kidding. This is to approve the equipment lease purchase agreement and CAD, records, JMS, and shared agency agreements with Motorola Solutions to purchase the computer-aided dispatch and records management system. It's not to exceed 9.2 million for the period January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2026. Authorize the purchasing agent to waive the formal bidding process and make the sole source purchase with Motorola. Purchasing from Motorola Solutions allows the Sheriff's Office to satisfy the need and desire to communicate and share information with every agency in the county and to create the efficiencies not available from any other vendor. Authorize Mr. Chair to sign three copies. Going through, since our last meeting, you had asked about crunching numbers, so that's kind of what we've been doing. We figured of the annual installment, which I might note, the first annual installment isn't until January 2021 of 1.3. Currently, we allocate about $1,062,525 to our dispatch services, and how we rolled that up was cost savings, dispatch contracts, and the efficiencies we think this system is going to enable us to do. So with that, the remaining $254,759 would be an additional net county cost to the general fund that would be budget-effective the fiscal year 2021 for the January 2021 first payment. After the seven-year financing plan commencing on the eighth year, our annual maintenance agreement for the software would be $456,000. The purchase of this new and updated CAD RMS system contributes to the county's strategic plan that includes the Safety and Security Initiative and Organizational Performance Initiative. The efficiency of an updated CAD RMS system provides increased productivity, streamlined system processes, and data property input. And dispatch services, as the chief mentioned earlier, our current CAD system has been in place since 1985. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from members of the Board? Supervisor Vanderpoel?
You know, I've been in place since 1984, so former system's almost as old as I am, so I just want to point that out. I just appreciate the effort that you've undertaken to present the lowest cost possible. I do think this is an important enhancement in public safety and think the public will be very well-served. I like the strategic planning between sheriff and fire for a co-location. I think there's numerous efficiencies that are yet to be realized should that, or once that does reach a full fruition. The additional $254,000 of new money is definitely a new cost, but it is significantly less than, I think, what we were originally presented with. So I looked at Jason and asked our CAO his level of comfort and for comment on the additional $254,000. I know it's really not that much in the grand scheme of things, but when you consider all of the additional costs and items we need to consider, I want to make sure that that's something that you're comfortable with.
Thank you, Supervisor Vanderpoel. Just a note of sort of reference here, this is mostly sheriff, but there is a little piece of fire in here. It's kind of rolled up together. We didn't dissect them out, so it does benefit both the fire and the Sheriff's Department. I do want to just commend the Sheriff's Department for coming to the table and really looking for ways to make this palatable. $254,000 is still a significant cost, but I think in terms of what we're getting for the money, I also want to appreciate Motorola for decreasing the interest as well. That's helpful to me. And so I do think that it is in a very efficient program. I do think the Sheriff's Department is expecting to have even more efficiencies with this system that we can probably quantify at this point. The Fire Department as well, down the road, will have other efficiencies. So I do think, you know, as the UnderSheriff mentioned, this is a 1985 CAD that we're still working on, and so, I mean, I think I was in third grade or something, so it's getting pretty old, that's the point. And so, again, I think we'll roll it in with the rest of the budget requests. Our departments have always been really good about coming to the table and making sure that they're meeting their annual targets, so I don't expect this to change. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
That was very helpful, Jason. Appreciate that feedback, and I'm definitely very supportive, so I hope that all of our high expectations are met with this program, and definitely happy to move for approval when we get to that point, and my colleagues are done commenting.
Very good. Supervisor Shuckland?
Yeah, I don't need to date stamp, like, 1984 for me.
Yeah, what were you doing in that year? You were probably working your first job?
No, I think I was at Fresno State.
Okay.
Go Dawgs. I think this is very appropriate, especially with the new dispatch center coming online, not sure when, but, you know, hopefully soon, but more so to have that communication, better communication, moving dispatch, sheriff dispatch out of the basement, moving fire out of the trailer at Mooney's Grove, the temporary trailer, right? Yeah. No, I wholeheartedly support it. I think, you know, as we said, it's more efficient, it's going to save time on calls, on a report writing, and I think in that being, that would make it more able, better able to have response to calls, so I wholeheartedly support this.
Supervisor Townsend?
I will check in with 1985. I was at Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo, go Mustangs.
Boo.
And it seems like yesterday, so, yeah, in the back, I see the hands in the back. But anyway, I really do appreciate all the work that sheriff and fire have put in on this and getting the negotiations down and bringing it to us and bringing it to a level we can understand what you're needing, and it does sound like there's going to be a lot of great bells and whistles that are on the backside of this that probably we don't even fully understand yet, but it's a great thing, it's a good time, and so looking forward to it, seeing it implemented. Thanks.
And I'm glad that we're doing this as well. I think, for me, the biggest benefit that I see is the ability to communicate with other jurisdictions. That's, I think, really key when we looked at, you know, the possibility of, you know, doing some type of consolidation with more jurisdictions, even though that's not on the table, I think this is probably the next best thing as far as being able to have some ability, again, to know what's going on with others, let them know what we're doing, and making sure that we're keeping our communities as safe as possible. And I appreciate the fact that we're able to get something that was more reasonable from a cost standpoint, and that, again, we can continue to serve our community very well.
Any public comments on this item? Seeing none? Oh. Wow. Supervisor Townsend took Supervisor Vanderpoel's...
See, you were laying that.
And Supervisor Shuckland seconded that, but we know what your spirit was.
That's right.
That's right. All right. Please vote, cast your votes. I'm the only one, I guess. And the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Just...
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chief. If I could just real quick take a minute, and I want to thank the representatives from Motorola, because they've given us almost $1 million in incentives in this package that I don't think we quite explained, but we have Joe Lunt, if you could stand up, Joe. He's the Vice President of Public Safety Software. Jeff Andrus is the Director of National Sales, and then Dave Allen is the Western Region Software Sales, and then Dave Anderson's the California State Rep. But these guys have, I think they've done us very well, to be honest with you, but... Thank you.
And Ring Collective has a great song called "My Lighthouse," so, you know, you said you wanted us to be the lighthouse. Okay, we'll move on to Item 80. Two more. 80. I don't know if it's a record, quite frankly, but I don't think so. I think we've had some more. Request from County Administrative Office to approve amendment to the County of Tulare Financial Policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Jason Britt, County Administrator. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I know we've had a long day. So, quick background, in February of 26 of this year, we had a board study session regarding our current financial policies. There was some vague, ambiguous language. It was silent on a strategic funding, funding a strategic reserve level, and the fund balance process wasn't clearly defined. So we left that study session sort of with the goal to update language, to add fund balance and reserve sections, classify fund balance for reporting purposes to recommended levels, receive direction on methodology to fund the reserve... receive direction on methodology to fund the reserve levels, and also receive direction to conduct annual review of financial policies. So again, there's two main pieces to this that we updated, other than just sort of cleanup language. One is our fund balance level, so the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends maintaining an unrestricted fund balance of a minimum of two months operating revenues. So for us, so we propose to amend the financial policies to strive to maintain no less than sixteen percent of total unrestricted fund balance, which is what GFOA sort of recommends that to be. And so for us, ending fiscal year eighteen nineteen, that our total unrestricted fund balance level is at twenty-one point three six. So we are exceeding in that area for this year. This is just a representative chart that kind of shows you what that unrestricted fund balance is and how we get that twenty-one point three percent, six percent is basically a combination of the total operating revenues divided by the fund, the fund balance there. We also are proposing to add language to clarify the reserve funding level, that we propose to strive to commit no less than eight percent of strategic reserve fund level, ending with the fiscal year eighteen nineteen, our strategic reserve level is at thirty million or four point six seven percent. So we are still a little bit under our goal. If we were to fund an eight percent strategic reserve, that would be fifty-one million dollars, so we have a little ways to go, but we're making progress every year with another two million budgeted this year, and that's been consistent with the board's direction for a number of years to build that reserve. And we use the word strive because that's really what we're, you know, striving to do. And then we also added language that would sort of describe how the board, through its action, would access the reserve funds, and so those would be to provide resources to make up for temporarily decreased revenues that result from a state or federal budget action, so some kind of quick loss of funding that we didn't have time to react to, provide temporary resources in event of an economic downturn, provide resources in event of a disaster or emergency declared by the board, state, federal government for disaster costs or costs associated with emergencies, and then, or to absorb any liability settlements in excess of available resources. So those would be sort of the four categories that would allow by our policies access to the reserve funding and would require board approval. This is another sort of county comparison, I think we showed you this back in February, sort of just kind of where we are in our neighboring counties. So on the left is the general, our neighboring counties run between ten and twelve percent for their general fund target. The best-in-class counties are sixteen percent, or fifteen and ten percent. You see Santa Barbara there at fifteen, San Diego at ten, Sonoma at sixteen with a reserve at eight. So adopting this policy puts us sort of in the best-in-class counties in terms of what the Government Finance Officers Association recommends for a county of our size. So in summary, the policies are amended to add language to include an annual review of financial policies by the County Administrative Office and the County Auditor Controller. We're also asking to amend financial policies language to add and update Section Six, which talks about the fund balance and reserve sections. It includes general fund, unrestricted fund balance, replenishment, general fund reserves, strategic reserves, and the general fund pension trust subsection. And of course, it adds language, as I mentioned earlier, to strive to fund that, to maintain that sixteen percent unrestricted fund balance and to strive to meet that eight percent strategic fund level. I'd also like to appreciate the Auditor Controller's office for his assistance in these policies, as well as Paul Guerrero from my office, who worked a lot on these as well. And with that, that will complete my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or take any comments.
Well, thank you, Mr. CAO. This is something I think that we had talked about previously, and something that was important to me to have something a little more concrete as far as having a reserve policy, and I think this is phenomenal, the best-in-class, I love, but it also gives us some flexibility if things happen, and we know that that's going to be the case, but it gives us something to strive towards, and I think knowing that fifty-one million would have been our, would have been one of the reserves, that that, we've got a long ways to go, and so it's, now's the time to start funding that a little bit more and taking it, taking it more seriously and making it a budget priority year in and year out. The other thing I know that was mentioned was the one fifteen trust, and so I think recognizing that fifty-one million is the goal for one of the reserves, that that's going to take some time to get to, but at a, at a future update over the next couple of years or so, that I would like us to also have a target and a goal for that one fifteen trust as far as how to fund that, you know, assuming that it's doing what we think it's going to do and monitoring it, that that would be another goal for us to try and save additional dollars for upcoming costs. Supervisor Townsend?
I just want to say thanks for putting it at sixteen percent, just so we could be on the top of that chart on the best-in-class. No, actually, I just want to say thanks to our CAO for going over this with me a little bit earlier before the budgeting and just helping to make that clear, what we were striving for, where we had been in the past. It was very helpful as a new supervisor to kind of be brought up to speed, and I've always been proud of the county for being fiscally conservative and then for taking it another step, I think is a wonderful, wonderful idea, so thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, do you believe the Auditor Controller wants to make comments?
Sure.
When it's appropriate.
Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment, you know, you bring up that slide that highlights the list of county comparisons, and I think it's just fantastic to see Tulare County on the best-in-class list, that's where we should be, I'm very proud of that, and I think that this board works hard to keep us there, so I think our actions in the past have been reflective of us being on this list where we're at. That's all I've got. Thank you, very supportive of this policy.
Mr. Cook? No hockey stick.
Just briefly, on the one fifteen trust, just so, the latest update I had is, for this past year, it's grown by ten percent, so we've had a good return on...
Beautiful.
An initial three million dollar investment, so I would like to commend this board and pass boards on their commitment to fiscal responsibility. I think this county is an example to governments throughout California. Also thank the CAO and his office, and I think we've worked well together on this and other projects. One thing I do want to say on that strategic reserve reaching the eighteen percent, that's based on revenue, and as revenues grow, it becomes more difficult to reach that amount. So if we're putting in two million a year, we're basically going to tread water, so I would just encourage you to look at, look at that, and that's it.
So you want us to put in more, we got you. Shocker, the auditor wants us to save more money and Controller Treasurer Tax Collector. Any other board comments or members of the public wishing to comment on this? Is an action item?
I'll make a motion to move.
Move by Supervisor Valero, second by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please cast your vote. The motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Mr. CAO. Got a...
Thank you.
Item eighty-one, request from the County Administrative Office to introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. County hearing officer, let's yank it.
Absolutely, so, good afternoon, almost evening at this point, but my name is John Hess, Assistant CAO. I'll make this very quick, this is your last agenda item for the day and year, so we are requesting suspension of the ordinance in order to spend more time reviewing it. It was a little more complicated than originally envisioned, potentially more costly to the appellant, and so we want to spend time with County Counsel as well as the Clerk's Office to ensure that if the, if there is a recommendation to proceed, that it's going to work for the board and for the appellant. So it is an urgency item, as there is a matter right now that could be appealed shortly. We are not equipped or prepared to handle that in the manner consistent with the ordinance, so with that, I would answer any questions or, you know, provide any more information as needed for the board.
Well, I appreciate this, just from the standpoint of, that we're looking for ways to improve, and we're not afraid to try something new. So we tried it, obviously, there's some hiccups and there's some other issues, and so we are flexible enough to try and say, okay, let's, maybe, maybe that wasn't quite the direction we needed to go, but I, I think the important part is, is that we're, we're willing to take that step, and if it doesn't work out, well, it doesn't work out. As of right now, you know, we lost some staff time, but we lose staff time on a lot of other things that are a bit silly. Mr. CAO?
So just a point of clarification, so to that point, Mr. Chairman, we are only suspending the county hearing officer and local appeals board section of that ordinance. The remaining provisions, which has more of the sort of informal appeal at the department level, and some of those other provisions are still remaining in the ordinance and are effective, so that's still, there's still some positive gain from that, it's just we're going to suspend that hearing officer ordinance and the local appeals board ordinance section of that.
Any public comments on this item? Any additional comments, questions by members of the board? Seeing none, I entertain a motion? Move by Supervisor Shecklin, second by Supervisor Valero. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes unanimously, five zero. Next, we'll go to item eighty-two, board member request, board members may make a referral to staff to have staff place a matter of business on a future agenda. Are there any items wishing to refer to staff? Seeing none. The clerk did inform me that in June of twenty eighteen, we had a hundred and eight items on a, on an agenda, so not quite at the record mark, but we got, we got close. Okay, so Madam Counselor, we still have two items?
I don't want to strive.
Strive? I don't know.
Alright, we do have two more items on for closed session, items E and S, and there will be no announcement now.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for attending today's meeting. This meeting's adjourned. Strive. Strive.[1659.11]